Mr. Mayor, you have a court. All of your distinguished council members are present. Would you like to call the meeting to order?
I absolutely would.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmembers Zapata.
Here.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here.
All members are present.
All right, next item. Review and modification of the proposed agenda. Do we have any?
The proposed agenda is on the board. It is in your packet. It is to frame the overarching strategic goals. We have, I will explain what we have done in this packet. And then the agenda item process and analysis. We have some work plan examples and council member requests, if you have any. I am not envisioning three hours of discussion. It's your meeting, and you may go as long as you choose. But I am going to respectfully recommend that we not review every single item that's on that spreadsheet. I do want to first apologize to you for your having received the spreadsheet with no time to review it. I recognize that and understand it. I accept full responsibility for that. However, I had nothing to do with it. That's the truth. What we tried to do, we gave you a spreadsheet at the previous meeting, and a council member, Zapata, made some very helpful suggestions for improvements on that spreadsheet. And so we've tried to incorporate those. I don't know that we've captured all of them. But as we go through it in broad stroke, I think that you will see that what you did in those previous meetings are reflected in the spreadsheet and in the matrix. So I am proposing that we not go through that spreadsheet page by page. I don't think, quite honestly, it's a productive use of your time. What I would suggest, though, is we go through it, and as you have time to go through it, that you let the city manager know if there are gaps in that spreadsheet. If there are things, as you go through it, and you think either not clear or we didn't capture it correctly, that you let us know and give us a chance then to do a corrective copy. But I'm hoping after this meeting that we can move to quarterly reports on where the staff is, on progress for each of the goals and objectives that you have established, if that makes sense to you. Any comments about that? Then I will go through quickly what is in your packet. Just by way of background, and I'll take only five minutes to do this. Back in November, you did entertain engaging a consultant to conduct your team building and community strategic planning. And you decided after reviewing that that you did not want to go that route. And instead, what you did, after some consideration, was direct the city manager to engage a consultant, and it turned out to be Henry Gardner, to facilitate these meetings, which I hope will really be a very strong building ground for your overall strategic plan. I think the elements are here, actually. And from that, you came up after several meetings with six overarching goals. And they just quickly are these: to improve the quantity and quality of housing, especially low-income housing, and reduce homelessness. That was goal number one. Number two is to increase revenue and improve economic development. Three, improve the quality of life, community health and social determinants of health, improve public safety, strengthen the city's internal infrastructure and processes, and address shoreline issues and ecological sustainability. You then added a number of objectives under each of those goals, and that's, those objectives are in that spreadsheet. And then at the special council meeting on June 15th, you did the following. And we have summarized these at a high level. So for goal number one, improving the quantity and quality of housing, include it, increase housing access, especially infill development, avoid the shoreline, prevent housing instability, and to reduce homelessness. That's highly summarized and in great detail in those spreadsheets. Goal two, improve revenue and improve economic development. You identified the following as key objectives or subgoals. Create new opportunities for workforce development in Richmond. Re-envision Richmond Port as an ecologically responsible revenue generator. Revitalize existing and small businesses. Create and re-envision infrastructure to attract new businesses in retail, manufacturing, infill developments, new customers for existing Richmond businesses. Research new progressive taxes. Strengthen grant infrastructure. Build capacity to apply for and administer grants, and advance the East Bay Public Bank. Those were all under goal number two, at a very high level. And again, multiple objectives in that spreadsheet. Improve maintenance, this is goal number three, the quality of life and community health. Improve maintenance of the built environment, parks, recreation infrastructure. Create new infrastructure. Increase transportation for underserved communities, including bike and pedestrian route trails. Create a plan for wastewater treatment and sewer infrastructure improvement. Re-visit Cypress Tran project to provide jobs. Improve recreation services by increasing access and improving communication and outreach. Address mental health in a holistic approach. And then goal number four, improve public safety. Improve road traffic, bike and pedestrian safety. Continue to support alternatives to police, for example, Office of Neighborhood Safety. Collaborate with community college regarding alternative methods. Reduce illegal dumping. Improve emergency response and preparation. Establish more public shelters. Reduce pollution and flaring from Chevron Refinery. Strategic parking and transportation plan that aligns with planned development. Goal number five, strengthen the city's internal infrastructure and processes. Ensure adequate staffing level and experience to meet the service goals of each department. Improve fiscal responsibility. Improve and modernize city's IT infrastructure. And lastly, goal six, address shoreline issues and ecological sustainability. Moving point Malati forward with the Park District. Consider shoreline resiliency. Examine the impact of distribution centers on public health and use the information to adjust zoning to protect sensitive receptors, seniors, children, hospitals, clinics, et cetera, from increased exposure by using green zones or other tools to create a reduced point source pollution area around sensitive sites. Underneath that, I asked the staff, and I don't know if they had a chance to do this, to then capture how many sub-goals and objectives we have. Do we have the totals of those before I get into that? Yes. So we have six overarching goals. I just highlighted those and some of the objectives. But under those six goals are 98 objectives. And then you had 30 kind of sub-goals, or not the overarching ones, but beneath those, and there are 41 line items. That is what is in the spreadsheet. All of those are captured in the spreadsheet. The six and the 30, the 98, and the 41. And so what staff has done is go through all of those and in a highly summarized fashion on page, pages five of eight through eight of eight. Five of eight through eight of eight, at a highly summarized level, are each of those. I will not read those to you, but ask you to take just a few minutes to review them and then comment as you will on those. Keeping in mind that...
Where is it you want to...
Oh, I'm sorry. In the staff report, I beg your pardon, in the staff report. Thank you for...
Is it in the blue...
Too much paper. There you go.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Look at five of eight through eight of eight. Through eight of eight. And again, I want to remind you and encourage you, when you have time, and it will not be this afternoon, to go through this spreadsheet and highlight any of the areas that you think either we have misstated them or that we have omitted one that you think that we agreed to put in here, because we want to make this as complete as possible. And then my suggestion is that after today, on a quarterly basis, or as you deem appropriate, that the staff give you an update on where we are on each of these goals and objectives. Some of these goals are long-term goals and are not captured in the summary here. I often go back to the goal that I think that you called out that is the longest-term goal, and it came from council member Zapata. And it's how you deal with those railroad tracks that prevent emergency exit from Park chester. That is one that would require, in my judgment, either taking up those tracks and realigning them somewhere else, or maybe building a bridge across the tracks. In my judgment and in my experience, to get to that goal and have it done, it is probably a 10-year process. But if you don't start, if you don't start, it's 10 years later. So I just pulled that one out as an example. Not to be ignored by any means. At some point, you have to start working on it, or you'll never get to the end point. Yes. Start it already. All right, now, okay. Make a note of that. Councilmember Zapata says that we've already started on what looks like a 10-year goal.
Pages five...
Five of eight through eight of eight.
Five of eight through eight of eight.
Yeah, take a look at those.
Are priorities which are already in motion.
Progress. We're working on that.
Right. Yeah.
Is that right? Yes, we are working on those.
Right. So what isn't here are priorities that haven't started but are still of primary importance.
Absolutely. And they will show on these various sheets.
Right.
Yes.
So if there is something like goal two here and have some...
Like the Public Bank.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
The Public Bank is, has already been started.
Yes.
And the staff is going to have to, and I know Shassa has assigned Nikki to be the main person, and Dave has assigned Floyd Andrews. So this agency working group, among all the agencies involved in the Public Bank, Berkeley, Oakland, Richmond, and Delmieta County...
County, Delmieta, yeah.
Are going to be meeting very soon. They're coordinating this as we speak. So I wonder if that could be added on to something in progress.
Can Nikki maybe respond? And I'm glad you raised that, because I'm not sure that this summary captures, you know, when we went through these goals and objectives, we identified several that we said are in progress. And then I think we said, I think it was councilmember Robinson who suggested the title of aspirational. Well, a lot of them are in progress, and there are a lot of interdepartmental, inter-agency involvement in those. So maybe Nikki can respond to the specific question you raised with respect to Public.
Yeah, the Public Bank is in process and will continue to be in process. What you actually have in your staff report are the actual projects that are the true hot buttons that will...
Can you speak louder so the audience can hear?
Are the true hot buttons that will have, that will take multiple years. So that's what's in the staff report, that when staff got together, those are in heavy motion. Public Bank is in motion and will continue to be in motion. So in your detailed sheet, it shows what's in progress and what's aspirational. So it's not that those will stop being worked on. They will continue. But these, the ones in the staff reports, are the hot buttons.
Okay. So could you explain to me that you're, I think you're saying the ones in the staff report are hot buttons. What does that mean?
They're moving and moving quickly and may take multiple years.
Okay. All right. But it doesn't mean that other things that are in motion aren't going to continue to be in motion?
Correct.
Well, absolutely. And one of the comments that I think I've made previously, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, and you called those out, because what I commit to you is that whatever is not on the list or raised up at a high level, those are not being put on the back burner. And I wish I had thought of this expression, but it's not original to me. It was a council member from Santa Rosa talking about the firestorm, and she said, "Well, I don't mind putting these on the back burner. I just want to make sure you don't put them in the freezer." Nothing is going in the freezer.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. I have a question around the port, because it's something that as economic development and has been, like the mayor has been leading some of that work, and particularly around the opportunity for offshore win potential manufacturing here. So I know that the hiring of the new port directories in the works, but I know that the other part is more long-term planning. So I have also the same question that councilman, Vice Mayor McLaughlin had, in terms of like how, like, this is something that the mayor is working and leading in this effort, how that is not put in the freezer and is part of priorities, right?
I'd ask maybe the staff to respond to that.
Sure. I have been getting direct requests from council, from council members as well as from staff for a number of things. And I, and in our meeting with Henry, what became apparent to me is that staff feel overwhelmed and that if everything is a priority, then nothing becomes a priority, because everything is a priority. And so what we were trying to do is essentially establish a playbook that we could have consensus around outlining where we think we really, we have a lot in motion already. For example, on our unhoused work, right? So we've submitted a home key application. We were working on tiny homes at RPAL. We have two grants from the state, right? So we feel like there's a lot of positive momentum there. And so what we wanted to do is use this as an opportunity to say, staff have done a great job in collaboration with community-based organizations. It doesn't mean the unhoused work is going to stop, but in terms of like putting more new projects, we don't have capacity to put more new projects. We really want to operationalize the directives the council has given us and the, and the grant funds we have, so we don't get any audit findings and we don't have to give the grant funds back. And so I'm using that one as a more illustrative example, because it's really further along. As it relates to the port, my understanding is that the mayor's office, and there was an item on this recently on the city council agenda regarding the work with Bloomberg, and so the mayor is going to, per the city council item that was approved, will be leading the work with Bloomberg and the Harvard work pertaining to the port. And so in terms of me as the city manager, my understanding from the conversations with the mayor is, is that something he's going to be leading? And so it wouldn't be on this list for me, because I want to be able to hone in on things that I, where I'm going to be, where I can say, okay, I'm responsible for these deliverables. The mayor is submitting an application, and so he's leading that work. And so I want to make sure that staff can collaborate and will support, and he can work directly with the port director. That's what was in the staff report that you all approved. But it is, I personally, I'm not going to be leading that. So, you know, I defer to the mayor's office and the way that that is the application that was submitted to Bloomberg and that was approved by the council.
I'm confused by your answer. So the, are you saying that, that anything that you're not leading is not in the plan? I mean, we're talking about goals and objectives of the city, not goals and objectives of the city manager.
Well, the council also asked in my performance evaluation to come up with goals and objectives. And so...
We're talking about goals and objectives of the city, not goals and objectives of the city manager. We need to get that straight.
Our discussion right now is...
Goals and objectives of the city.
To the mayor's point, is the goals and objectives that were adopted in this document.
Correct.
And we did say, although we didn't, we have staff accountability or assignment, I can't read with the glasses, and I can't read without them. I apologized about the font. Staff accountable. We did put staff accountable for, I think, every single one of these, although I think we did recognize that on some of these, we do need the active leadership of the mayor and in some instances, the council. And I go back to councilmember Zapata, and I think he accepts that. We will need your active leadership and involvement. But we did assign, we did say staff assignment on each of these to land somewhere. And the reason for that, and I want to be helpful and supportive to this discussion, to track it is absolutely going to land on the staff. There's no question about that. So on certain issues, we will need your leadership. We will need vice mayor's leadership. But the staff is going to have to track this and make sure that we're following through and doing what we said we're going to do.
Correct.
I think. And I hope that that's accurate and that people agree with that. Yes? Yes.
I mean, whatever goals we come up with and land on today, it will be staff that needs to implement those goals. So to me, we're pretty much just saying the same thing, just in a different way.
Yeah. And we'll need your support.
Right.
As long as we're all on the same page on what our goal is and who's taking responsibility for the implementation of those goals, I think that's what we need to be clear on and not... So yeah, that's me just saying, yes, I agree.
I think the discussion is helpful.
Yes.
And the clarification is helpful, I hope.
Yes.
I'm sorry, councilmember Robinson.
So is that working? Yeah. Okay, good. So I think that there is a point of clarification that is important, that it should be city goals, not our goals and your goals. It should be city goals. I believe if something's moving forward, and we know it's moving forward, and there's city dollars associated with it, like the port, that it should be on the list. Maybe where it falls on the list is a question, but it should definitely be on the list. Like we hired somebody to do an audit, it should be on the list. And just, we can make it clear who's responsible for what in the responsible parties kind of section. And then I just wanted to say a little bit about the evaluation and setting goals that will revisit in the next evaluation for the city manager. That, the purpose of that is to select, actually, we asked the city manager to select out of all these goals that we're prioritizing, of the prioritize goals, what smaller list that she's going to make sure gets moved forward in this next term evaluation term. And it was up to the city manager to select which ones those would be of the prioritize list, once we finished prioritizing, because she would have more, the most insight on what could be moved forward within that term. And so it should not be, in my opinion, and I think it's what we discussed in this, in the subcommittee, every goal or even every prioritize goal, but rather a smaller list of the prioritize goals, that she's going to say, these five things, or these four things, or whatever. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Sure.
Thank you. That's helpful. And I think after the discussion today, and I can hear from the council based on this follow-up discussion, I'll be in a position to better do that.
I was just ready to make that comment, that I think that, I think that is the case, actually. Yes, councilmember Zapata?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to make sure that I understand what our task is today. Are we just reviewing just for the sake, making sure that everything we talked about, if we remember, it's here? Are we looking to kind of prioritize a little bit further? Are we looking to remove some, add some? I'm not sure that I kind of got the ask, so I want to make sure. And is it also what support we're giving to city staff so that we're not completely overwhelming them? Are we looking to maybe look at these goals and say, okay, there's so many that we're not going to be able to achieve on year one. How many do we spread out through multiple years or start different years? Some of them, like you were mentioning earlier, might be a 10-year goal. Do we plant the seed today and kind of wait for it to grow throughout the next couple of years and water it along the way? Or do we not plant it till next year? Is that kind of what we're looking at?
I'd like to, I'd like to say that, under the recommended action on page two of eight, it says to receive a report, which we are doing. But it also says, accept updated focus priorities for fiscal year 2003, 2004 through fiscal year 2005, 2006, and provide direction to staff. So we're being asked to accept this as is and to provide changes that we see fit. So Mr. Gardner has suggested that we look through this and see if there's anything missing that we think needs to be there. For instance, the, the Public Bank is not mentioned here, and the vice mayor McLaughlin said that that is actually something that is in the works. We're moving on that, so it should be on here.
Just to, if I might respond, I had recommended and continue to recommend that we not redo this list, that I think we have been faithful in capturing, we don't have AI yet to do this, so we're limited with the human capacity to capture what you already decided. I also think I said, I have no expectation that you can sit here now and go through this and flag areas that you would like to highlight, or you say, I don't see this in the summary, and I think it should be there. I think that we need to give you ample time to do that. And I think to ask you to sit here and try to do that here today is not realistic and not reasonable, I don't think. So what I suggested was if we can focus on two through eight...
Henry, can we go through the PowerPoint? Because then it'll answer a lot of the questions that are...
I'm sorry, could I?
If staff goes through the PowerPoint, I think it'll answer the mayor's question.
Yeah. So you're asking us to approve pages five of eight through eight of eight?
Right now, I'm not asking you to do any of that.
Right.
I want to have discussion at the end of that.
Okay.
But right now, no. But the goal is, what I understood, the goal is, is to, like, city staff has done a good job to create some priorities, and they are putting out here for us to consider. So this is what we, the goal is to see if we agree with staff recommendation to see, to look at these and to see that this is what we want to do, or if there is something that is missing from here, we can add it, right?
I think that's summarized.
Okay.
Yes. Councilmember Robinson.
Just want to add...
Mr. Mayor, you need to help me.
I want to, yeah. I want to ask a clarifying question, because then I think it'll make it easier for me not to be, not to interrupt. For instance, so for instance, I'm trying to understand how do we, how do we understand the things that are not on the shortlist? So for instance, Niestram Village is something that we, we hope is going to keep moving forward, but it's not on the shortlist.
And that's under which one?
It would be under 1-1, increasing housing access.
And which villages?
Niestram. Niestram Village.
I'm sorry?
Niestram Village.
Niestram.
The project's called Niestram Village. And so I would like to understand from staff, what does it mean for it not to be on the shortlist? Is that something that I should worry about? Is it going to be moving forward anyway? And it's all good, it's just not on the list? Like, if I can understand that, then I could understand other things.
It's under four. So on, if, when we get to slide seven, councilmember Robinson, you'll see it under goal 1.1, priority for public housing, agency, recovery, sustainability. That is our FARs agreement with HUD. And so that's where that would be covered.
Okay. Good. The city manager suggested, and it's my error, that if we could, I want to make sure we've responded to your immediate questions. And if we have, not all of them, immediate ones, that we go through a slide presentation, and I think some of your questions might be answered. Is that reasonable, fair, works for you? Is that reasonable, fair, works for you?
Yeah.
Ms. Mayor?
I just want clarification.
Sure.
On the Niestram Village, the city manager mentioned a point, and I don't see it on page five of eight, which is the priorities that we're looking to-
It's under the FARs agreement, Mayor Martinez?
It's under, here, under which?
Under the FARs agreement with HUD.
Oh, you just didn't call it out specifically.
That's where Niestram Village is captured by staff-
Okay.
And with HUD and our legal agreement with HUD, between the city, HUD, and the housing authority.
So FARs is Niestram?
FARs includes Niestram.
Okay. And what else does it include?
All of the requirements for the housing authority, Nevin, Hacienda, the administration building, Richmond Village 1, 2, 3, the outstanding audits. We have a, it's been on the council agenda several times.
Okay. Thank you. It would have been a lot more, it would have been better to have been more, to be more-
We can do that.
Yeah.
Maybe we're being too condensed. We can elaborate, where we revise this.
Yes.
We'll revise it. Okay. All right. We're going to do the slide presentation? And who's going to walk the council through that?
Patrick, do you want to walk through the slides?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Who's going to, is Patrick going to do that?
Yes, Patrick's going to walk through the slides.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martinez and City Council. Patrick Seal, City Manager's Office, Project Manager 1. And so what we're going to share with you is a set of priorities that are based out of your voted council goals. And so in compiling the list, staff had met and considered a number of criteria, including those projects that were already in progress, staffing and staff capacity to actually complete the work, the capacity to actually complete the work within the current fiscal year or the subsequent fiscal year, and also budget. So what you're seeing isn't necessarily exhaustive, but if given staff had the opportunity to prioritize those things where we could ultimately get to what we would probably consider a win in the very near future, these are inclusive of those specific projects. So if we could go to the slide. So it is from that frame that we want to take in this information. So for strategic goal area one, which is improving quantity and quality of housing, the things that staff believes it can actually get done, given the constraints that it has around staffing, timing, budget, capacity, and those things that are currently in progress, these are inclusive of those things. For Goal 1.1, Increasing Housing Access, especially infill, you see that staff would love to be able to focus on and prioritize MetroWalk, the Home Key, Tiny Village, and the FARs Agreement, Public Housing Agency Recovery Sustainability, and those projects that were referenced by the city manager, Shasta Curl. Another thing that staff would love to be able to prioritize in the current fiscal year and the subsequent fiscal year, '24, '25, would be reduced homelessness, and specifically the Encampment Resolution Fund, Reso 1, and the Encampment Resolution Fund, Resolution 2. And you can see that there is funding there for both of those projects. So this is also another project that staff would love to focus on in the current fiscal year and subsequent fiscal year. 1.4, Increase Housing Quality. You can see that we would love to focus, or staff has identified that they would like to focus on the NEVA Plaza Phase 1 Rehab and the Residential Rental Inspection Program Amendment that was directed at, by City Council. Next slide. For Goal Area 2, Increase Revenue and Improve Economic Development. Again, considering the criteria and the lens and frame in which we're approaching this, staff would love to be able to focus and prioritize with Goal 2.1, Creating New Opportunities for Workforce Development. They would love to prioritize youth works, some vocational training, some job training for high school seniors and juniors, apprenticeship, and implementation to the Maritime Academy connected to Kennedy High School. 2.3, which is revitalizing, attracting, and maintaining existing small and new businesses. We would love to focus on revitalization of the business counseling and technical assistance. And you can see there at the end of each of these, there might be a reference. And that reference, 2.3A, aligns with the more detailed spreadsheet matrix that you have. But for, again, the sake of something that's more summative, we have tried to be as pithy as possible. You can see there's an interface with Richmond by local campaigns and improving the economic development process that supports local businesses. 2.4, Reenvisioning Infrastructure and Retail and Manufacturing. There would love to be a focus on Hilltop, the Hilltop Specific Plan, Entertainment and Arch District, and Downtown Revitalization. For Goal 2.5, Research New Progressive Taxes, Measure U, obviously, implementation. Next slide. For Goal 3, Strategic Goal Area 3, Improve the Quality of Life and Community Health and Improve Social Determinance of Health. Staff would love to be able to focus on Goal 3.1, which is Improving Maintenance of the Built Environment Parks, and more specifically, sidewalk and pavement improvements, improvements to median and repair, public property and maintaining our public properties, parks, and also the arborist and trees. For 3.2, New Infrastructure, BTA, the main library, obviously, with the grant and match from the city, implementing already grant-funded park projects that are in place, soccer fields, and implementing the existing CIP list, which includes almost nearly or over 50 projects that are currently on that list. Again, these are areas that, given your voted priorities that are exhaustive of those nearly 100 objectives, staff is calling out these as those opportunities that they feel they can be most successful at going forward. And we added one here, 3.x, which is, given our award of the Transformative Climate Communities Grant of $35 million, staff is very much interested in focusing on implementing this, and there are certain requirements as it relates to timing on implementing this. So again, given staffing capacity and resources, there are 10 projects that are under the TCC Grant, which are listed here. I won't name them all, but it is quite a major lift. And so staff would love to be able to focus on implementing this as a project. Next goal area, thank you.
Patrick, do you want to show that, what we have related to that specific project for TCC, just so council can get a sense of, like, the administration involved with this grant?
Yeah, so we will, we will step to that. Strategic Goal Area 4, Improve Public Safety. Staff would love to focus on 4.1, which is Improving Road Traffic and Bike, and specifically the 132-plus traffic, street calming projects that are already in queue, sidewalk safety, improving street safe paving and red light and safety cameras. In addition, 4.2, Continue to Support Alternatives to Policing, in other words, ONS. And we just approved at our September meeting, the Community Crisis Response Program, and there were outlined in that improvement, some very, very strict timelines and dates that you all approved. And so we would love to be able to focus on making that come to fruition. And 4.3, Reduce Illegal Dumping. One of the things that we would love to focus on is education enforcement, collaboration with our police department and code enforcement and district attorney, and offer some incentives for those who can report illegal dumping. Strategic Goal Area 5, which is Strengthening the City's Internal Infrastructure. Staff would love to focus on Goal 5.1, which is Ensuring that the Right Staffing Levels and Experience Meet Service Goals. And where we would love to focus and currently is in progress is the workforce analysis. Again, that was approved by City Council, which is currently in the work, and also filling vacancies to strengthen retention and recruitment. 5.2, Improve Fiscal Responsibility. A priority that staff would love to focus on is the state audit and the corrective actions, unfunded liabilities, and reducing overtime and eliminating overtime in public safety departments. 5.3 is Improving and Modernizing the City's IT Infrastructure. We have already begun, City Council Chambers would love to do Phase 2, munis version upgrade, our CRW track it replacement, multi-factor authentication, we're doing website upgrade and phone system upgrade. These are things that are in queue, and staff is already focusing energy, time, and effort, not just staff, but also consultants are focusing on. So again, these are priorities we would love to highlight for you as areas we would think would be able. And finally, 6.2, Shoreline Issues and Ecological Sustainability. 6.2 is Consider Shoreline Resiliency, and we would love to be able to issue an RFP for adoption and begin rebuilding a resiliency plan. And we've added one here, 6.x, which was Reduce Local Hazards. So that means conducting a local hazard analysis and mitigation plan, and also wildfire risk reduction. So these are, again, your strategic goal areas, and staff teased out from the larger matrix, those things that would be a desire to focus on, again, given a number of criteria, which include our timeline to make things happen this fiscal year, which we think is a doable thing this fiscal year or the subsequent fiscal year, giving our staffing levels, what we actually think we can get done, giving a budget constraints, et cetera. So it is from the lens of those criteria that staff teased out from your voted goals, these priority areas, and we would love to hear, I guess, input from you based on that. Again, again, please keep in mind that it is from those lenses that these exist. I'm sorry? Oh, Carrie?
I'm sorry. Give me some of your examples.
Oh, we want to share a few examples. I'm sorry. Go ahead. So, oh, next slide. Work plans. So it is also very important to consider that when you look at your list and you see staff identified and alternatives, that it is important that a few things be taken into consideration, your consideration, is number one, that although a staff or department is identified, there is definitely a strong interdepartmental reliance on making things happen, not only interdepartmentally, but that can also include some state situations as well as county. And that although we look at an item or a line and we see a single thing, there are a myriad of subsystems and sub-processes and additional steps that are included. And so we would love to maybe just show you a few slides here of kind of the complexities of some of these work plans. So when we say main library renovation, if you look at this, what you're looking at is a time, a work plan and a Gantt chart. That includes at least 20-plus steps over the next two years that will require a great deal of attention and time and effort. And so it could be, we want to make sure that when you go or you're considering the priorities as we're highlighting them, that you are aware of the details necessary to actually make a lot of this happen. Next slide, please. When we think of the state audit corrective action, again, it can seem like a single line, but you can see here the 11 actions that need to happen to make that actually happen. And you can also see at the top, there's quite a bit of time necessary to dedicate. And as Henry has mentioned to you regarding finance, more specifically, that they are working diligently, the staff up in that department, and to address some of these issues, but that also requires time to get staff on board, not only, but to also get staff up to speed to be as effective and efficient at addressing some of these, so that we can address our state audit findings and get off of the state auditor's list, which is of utmost importance to the city manager. Next slide. When we think of the Transformative Climate Communities Act, Communities Grant, what you have here is the scope of work. For the 10-plus projects, you can go ahead and hand those out. This is the scope of work, the task necessary. And I believe we have leaned up maybe four or five years to get these, all of these projects to completion, five years to get all of these projects to completion. And so it will require a heavy lift and a great deal of coordination and management. And so we'd just like to share with you how and why the priorities that we're sharing are the priorities that we're sharing, because we are, there's a lot to get done. I know you can't read it, but just gazing at this, it should cause you to kind of feel like, wow. So again, there's a lot to get done, and so we wanted to share some context under which we have teased out, or staff has teased out, the priorities in which we would love to focus on in the next two years, and to consider all of the steps that are necessary to actually bring some of these things to the finish line. Thank you.
I have questions from a couple of council members on what was just presented. I think now would be the time to do that before we move on and the questions become mute, moot. I'm sorry. Councilmember Bana?
Thank you. But under Goal Area 4, there is nothing about emergency-
Your microphone.
My.
Oh, just press your red button there in front of you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, sorry. Under Goal Area 4, Public Safety, there is not a word about emergency responders, dispatchers, community preparedness. Why is that? And I hope that the city has a plan for having a police station soon. San Pablo hasn't started. They issued a bond for 40-something million dollars, and they're going to build it. City of Richmond should have started instead of paying millions of dollars for rent. So I hope to see-
With the current, Mayor, do you want me to respond or just listen?
Yes.
So, Councilmember Bana, that's a really good point. At this juncture with current interest rates and being on the state audit list, we, although that is important for our long-term planning, that is not something that we think we can reasonably accomplish in the next two to three years. So that is, I've directed staff to work on that. We've had internal meetings about if there could be some other type of joint-use facility, but we currently don't have the financial capacity to issue additional bonds and debt service to them at the current interest rate. So if interest rates go down in 2026, that might be something the city council could consider, but it's not something that we can reasonably accomplish in the next two to three years.
Okay, but in general, there is not a word about emergency responders and dispatchers and community preparedness under Goal Area 4?
That doesn't mean that it's not important. It means that we have a finite amount of staff capacity. We're working on getting our second academy for fire up and going, and for this year, starting early next year, and so that is a priority. However, we have 132 requests for street calming projects, and we've been directed by the council to start the Community Crisis Response Program and to reduce illegal dumping. So we're trying to put forward things that we think that we're going to, beyond regular staffing, that we're going to be able to reasonably accomplish. I think hiring staff, that's an ongoing item that we have, that's part of day-to-day administration, and so that's why it's not noted here. But if the council wants to remove something that is here and place that as a priority instead, that, we could certainly do that. I just, I'm trying to have a reasonable set of goals and priorities that we can share and try to accomplish as a team.
Councilmember Bana, if I might, I heard two parts to your question. One seemed to relate to an infrastructure idea, a building. But I thought I heard you say that there was nary a word about anything else we might be doing around this issue. I am good at putting words in people's mouths, but that's what I heard you say. And I would ask that we figure out a way to be responsive to that concern, to, there are several things that we have up here on this priority list that we think we have made plainly clear. We're not going to be able to accomplish all of that within a short period of time. But I hear you saying you don't want this to be put in the freezer.
More than that, I would like to say that we live on Hayward Fault. More than that, I would like to say that we live on Hayward fault, what if there's an earthquake tomorrow? You don't want to be sorry, you'd rather be safe. So I would like to ask the city manager to consider a sense of urgency. Climate resiliency is very important, but it would be a framework for the rest of the things we do to consider.
What would that, what would that look like to address your concern, to put up here? Because we've explained the building part, and that's real clear.
Proper training for emergency responders, make sure we do have enough number of dispatchers. I know they're hiring.
They're working on that one.
And also proper equipment, make sure their needs are taken care of. That's all.
Yes, so Councilmember Bana, we do activate the EOC when we need to. We did it this year, and it was the best EOC operation I've ever seen in 20 years working in Richmond. It was hands down absolutely amazing. Staff were on top of it. I was very pleased at the way that everything ran, and it was exceptional. All of the equipment that FIRE has asked for and all of the items they've asked for, we included in the budget. And if anything else comes up that they need that hasn't currently been requested, I'm happy to bring it to city council for consideration. And we're doing the best we can to ramp up in public safety in both police and fire. And we've done a really good job considering that there wasn't hiring very active in those departments for the last, prior to me becoming city manager, so I'm playing catch-up. And what I do want to reiterate is that public safety, at least what I feel like I was hearing from the council is, is that when we think about public safety, that the council as a whole was asking me as city manager to think about it in a different way, not just in the traditional sense of police and fire. So what I tried to do with staff and coming up with these objectives, it's not to say, oh, you know, Chief Montoya, fire's not important. Fire's incredibly important, but I have to try to focus on, oh, we have to also hire more folks for the academies, backfill positions that we need in fire for inspectors, and then concurrently try to launch a new program. And so that, to me, is a huge lift. So if it's something we've never done before, like community crisis response, that's why I put it there, because we've never done it before, and it's going to be a huge lift.
I understand, but I believe that real emergency response is more important than that. I don't think if the council says, replace the old notion of it, but expand it probably, and we would like to expand it, but include that in the interest of time, I'll be happy to work with you on bringing those items to the council if the council believes that's what we should do.
Yes, I think now is the time to discuss goals, not to debate them. So what I'm hearing here is a back and forth on the need for it and then an answer of how we are addressing it.
What do you suggest?
So what I'm suggesting is that as we move forward, we make our case, but we don't debate it.
So do you agree that I work with the city manager and just bring it to the city council?
Mayor, do you want to note that we talked about today, we're having presentations scheduled for public safety coming up at upcoming meetings of the city council so that they, the chiefs can present their plan to reduce mandatory overtime in the next 18 months? Those will be forthcoming in October and November. So it's not in the freezer.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, yes, and I, yes, it is your meeting, and I want to respect all of the comments. Just one last sentence on Councilmember Bana's comment. I think she was referring to a goal or objective that actually is on this list and not seeing it anywhere up here as a priority. And what I heard her say, and I think there's acceptance, the building is not going to happen, and she's recognizing knowledge.
Yeah, not the building, I'm talking about.
She's raised issues about training and this training in-house and training with the community. I would respectfully request that we figure out a way to capture that as we have several other items on this list.
And six, as Henry.
That do not require immediate resources, but so that we don't lose it and continue to pay attention to it. Is that fair?
Well, it'll be fair if, and actually, I see all of us championing one goal that's not on here.
Well, it is on here, though.
And so all of us will be making a case for our, the item that we champion.
Well said.
But, but, once we have them all up, then we as a council will have to decide which of those we want to go with and which, as the city manager suggested, which one of these we might need to take off in order to have a healthy but not overwhelming set of goals.
Well said.
And so it's, yes.
I think you got your help, man.
So I appreciate the PowerPoint and the work that's been done here. Just looking at it in general, to me, it looks like really great work. Like, this looks like a really good condensing of the goals, and I am not out of agreement with any of them. It looks kind of good. Of course, I have things like, where's Niestram Village? And I don't want it to fall off and be in the freezer, and we all have things like that. So I feel like maybe if there's, and maybe a way to move forward would be if somebody has like an objection to something that's mentioned here, because if we're not, if we're not objecting to something, then, then I think, you know, we can just move it forward. And then when it comes to things that are on the big list but not in here, then I think we need to talk about what is, what does that look like? What is that process? Because again, it's not that these things are not going to be moving forward on different trajectories, depending on how big the project is and all those things. So maybe if we have, if we can all get comfortable with what the process is for things that are not on the shortlist so that we don't have to worry about them, then we could just say, this looks good, you know?
So the caveat is that the city manager suggested that if we put things on, some of these will have to come off. So then that would require a conversation as to which of these should come off.
Yeah, but maybe we can start with, if anyone has an objection for some reason with something that's on the list, and if there's no objections, then at least we know that, and then we can go to what's missing in terms of things that you would absolutely want to see. You think that, for some reason, it can happen within the next one to two years, and it should be on the list, then we can work through that, and then we would have to negotiate about what falls off or not. I'm just trying to find a process so that we're not just kind of everyone with whatever project they're committed to is talking about it without a, without a container to move it forward.
Yeah, so my suggestion was that as we go around and we find that there are things we champion, we make a list of them so that we can see which items are on here but not in here that are important to the city council so that we can consider them all together.
Yeah, my request is that we just do it one goal at a time, like do Goal One, and everyone has their things that are missing for Goal One, and then we can check that off the list, and then Goal Two, and then everyone says, what's missing for Goal Two, so that we can have a regular process to move things, through things.
I'm okay with that process.
Councilmember Jimenez has been trying to say.
Yes, I know. I have her down.
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to staff for the great work. I don't have any objection. I think like you have done an incredible work to think about what each city council champion issues are and consider it here. Of course, I have my things, but I think like what I also want to remind people is that this is for the two years. It's like, maybe there are some things that is longer term or something, so we can't, we can put it there, but if they are longer terms, we cannot expect to be in this list as it is. My other comment is about staffing and capacity. I think like when, I just hear like we are overwhelmed, we are overwhelmed, we understand that, and this is what like I want to follow staff direction with this, but at the same time, we need to also add capacity. So for instance, in, we are talking about 132 implemented, 132-plus traffic, street calming, and we don't have a traffic engineer. So we need to think about adding that capacity so we can do it. When we talk about the community crisis response, which I will put implement the community crisis response by August 2024, which was the clear direction that the city council did, well, we need to hire the program manager and the, like, to help with that because it's true. The staff that we have right now, there is no that skills, but so, but what we need to bring is that skills, skills to be able to implement it and to take that responsibility for the current staff that is here that are already overwhelmed. So I think like we need to also just not only think about kind of like in the, in kind of like in the thing of half glass empty. Whenever, but also like what is the possibilities and how we resolve this, and I think like some of that is adding the capacity that is needed. So we kind of like take that off, that this is why we are, like we, when the port is proposed, like, and all the things with the port, immediately what we say is like we need to hire a port director because we know that with the current staff, there is no capacity for doing that. But if we add that capacity, we can start thinking about what is the next step for that and so forth. Thank you.
I don't know if the city manager wants to respond to that. I know that that is a very welcome comment for the staff. I have told you before in my observation, there are some deep, deep gaps in the organization. That's not in every single department, but the capacity is not presently here to do some of this. And I will say this, I know that the human resources department is actively engaged in trying to recruit and bring forth top candidates for a number of positions in the organization. That's going to take some time, but I think the staff really appreciates your comment, recognizing that we're not at capacity to do all the stuff that the staff wants to do, and the staff thinks is very urgent. I don't know if the city manager wants to respond. Anybody else wants to respond? Okay.
So what I plan to do is share what the council agrees upon today with the consultant that's through the state audit process, working on the workforce analysis, to then help inform the hiring moving forward. And the other thing that we're also trying to balance is there's a number of RFPs that we've asked staff to prepare as an example that could help facilitate a lot of the work getting done. And so, you know, I've been asking staff, oh, you know, specifically with Daniel, I'm like, well, where is this RFP that I've asked for, right? Like, it's been a while, and he's, he said, we haven't had time to finish the RFP because he's been responding to inquiries from the council. So I'm also trying to see if we can come and start to think about it in preparation for our next meeting with Henry. If we're going to focus on these goals, we want to be able to respond to inquiries from the council, but staff also need time to complete their day-to-day work. And so right now, it feels like staff is, at least what I'm hearing from the directors, is that they're spending a lot of time responding to individual inquiries, and so just want to flag for the council that that does impact our capacity to move forward your key other objectives and requests.
All right, Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, Test, okay. No, yeah, I mean, at least for me personally, when I'm looking at this, it seems like all the things that, at least in our first couple sessions that I was a part of, are included at the things that were some of my top five. I mean, maybe with the, something that is missing, but there's like, I guess the two questions I have, which doesn't necessarily need to be answered today because I know we got a broad scope that this is for the next two fiscal years, and even still, the list that we've even condensed still seems like a very extensive condensed list, so I do just kind of like more have like a process question on like with these five goals and the subcategories, like on the day-to-day, what does it look like moving forward on each of these sub-goals? And I guess my second question was on page five of the PowerPoint, slide nine, under the capital improvement project list, 50 projects. I was wondering if the Martin Luther King Community Center was also included in the capital improvement projects, because we do have a couple of things listed, like the main library and BTA, but I know that's also been one of the things, including in our city council meeting last night, that we've mentioned, but isn't necessarily reflected on the shortlist. So I was wondering, where is that on the goals and priorities and if it's under the capital improvement projects? So yeah, those are just my questions on just like, what does the implementation look like day-to-day, quarter-to-quarter, as we start to sift through all this extensive list, and where does the MLK Community Center fall on these goals and priorities? Because last time I checked, I know that was definitely one of them, too.
Do you want to respond to the last question?
The CIP projects that we have right now, the list of 53 includes projects that are grant-funded, where we currently have grant requirements, and we have about a $16 million shortfall. And so for your council meeting on the 3rd or the 17th, we'll have an item on that. And unfortunately, at this juncture, we don't have a definitive funding source from, for the MLK Center. It doesn't mean that it's not important, but in terms of where we have existing contracts in place for grants, those are the projects that Public Works has listed as those initial 53. And then there's 132 other traffic calming requests that Public Works has so far to date. So those are, in addition to the day-to-day maintenance and the facilities assessment that needs to get done, as well as some much more critical thinking around Veolia. So we can try to continue to work with Public Works and community services to identify how to bring the MLK Center online. We just don't currently have a definitive plan.
You also asked a process question, if that answered your question regarding MLK. I don't know. Did you have a follow-up question about MLK?
I mean, I guess not necessarily a follow-up question, just only slight confusion because in our impact study, study presentation that we got yesterday, it was being framed on like, oh, this is something that we have a plan around and then just not seeing it reflected on here. So I just wanted to bridge that connection from priorities we talked about yesterday that aren't necessarily reflected on this list and just seeing if it was in another subcategory like Niestram Village. And, you know, my other process question, which is probably more of a long-term answer, is just like the implementation of all several of these subcategories of projects that we do want to accomplish in the next couple of fiscal years. That's just something to think about, just so I have a sense on like what that day-to-day operation, planning and implementation looks like as we're tackling these goals. So that's what I wanted to put out there.
Maybe would be on a day-to-day basis, but I did suggest that you get quarterly reports on where each of these is. I started to say something about my sister who told me I never learned colors, but I think that color was purple, because I think it might in part answer your question about the day-to-day. One of your last slides, help me, people who know colors, I think it was purple or blue or something like that. It's this, it's got a long list of the steps of what has to happen with the various activities across departments. I think it was the last one you put up there.
And your point as well, take a compliment.
It's that thing.
Slide 26.
No, it's that one right there. That might be somewhat illustrative.
Cornflower.
Yeah, what color is that? I think it's purple. Well, I'm covering it. But you can see all of the intricacies in this, and that's kind of the day-to-day stuff that has to happen to get that one thing done, I think. I think.
And we can.
Help me, you can't get away with this. What color is that?
Lilac.
Cornflower. Yes.
That's the wrong answer.
Henry and Mayor, if I may, I think we can put together another list of the things that, that are not in the parking lot, but they're on the bike rack that we know we need to take care of, like the police station, like the MLK Center, but we don't yet have a definitive strategy.
And I would say that if that color was a shade darker, I would. And I would say that if that color was a shade darker, I would call it lilac.
So you had Ben and then me.
All right.
Okay. Councilmember Bana.
Thank you. So I remember we had discussions about capacity building for grants, and I think other council members also want the city staff to be able to apply for more grants. It's great, we're successful, but we really need to outbuild capacity and hire more grant riders. I know I suggested some grants that were never applied to. The community keeps talking about, you know, why doesn't the city apply or doesn't have the capacity to apply for grants? So I know it's not under action items, but I'm asking the city manager to please consider it. It's very important. We all expect the grant capacity to increase at least by 50%, if not by 100%.
Excuse me, if I may interrupt. All of us have suggestions, but if they're not on this list, I think we need to, you know, table it for another time. We need to stay focused on on the goals and objectives that are in the document.
But these are actionable goals. I'm saying that's something in addition that I think we asked the city manager to do it, but it doesn't fall under these categories.
Is it in here?
I'm sorry?
Is it in this document?
Correct.
So so if it's not in this document, I think this is not the place to discuss it.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Yeah, first of all, I just want to respond to what the city manager said about, and it's just an idea since it came up here. And then I have just a few short comments about those listed goals. So with Public Works getting so many requests, and I know, you know, we all probably send it to Daniel and Robert and, you know, community members themselves and, you know, do it as well. So is it possible, I mean, that maybe one day a week, like Friday, one person gets assigned from Public Works to handle all the requests? And then council members, when we're responding to constituents, we could say, well, we have a system in place that may be up to a week.
Excuse me, once again.
I know, I know.
I know we're working, we're not working on solutions, we're working on goals and objectives. So I appreciate your idea. Thank you.
But city manager, it was in response to something the city manager said about why some of the actionable items couldn't get done. So that was how that tied in. But the other things I want to say are, first of all, on under IT, I'm wondering, and I'm confused here, if we're going to talk, if we're going to do this in an organized, process oriented way. I know Doria had suggested that we, any further kind of breakdown of some of these goals that we wanted to add would be going through goal overarching goal by overarching goal. And if we had more things or breaking down something, so I can wait because I have something on IT, which is goal, strategic goal number five. I could say it now or I could wait till we get to it.
Please wait, because because I'm holding mine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilmember Robinson.
I was just hoping to request that we move through each one regularly. We're all kind of popcorning and it's not getting us anywhere.
Right, yeah. And and so that was going to be my suggestion, but after Sapeda has a statement, then we'll loop back to strategic goal area one and go through the process suggested by Councilmember Robinson, which is to go through the strategic goal areas one by one and either agreeing that we like what we see or adding suggestions if there's things that we think need to be massaged. So Councilmember Sapeda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if it might help us to, and city manager, you might have already done this, maybe I haven't just seen it yet, but kind of dividing between what is a new goal that the city council gave versus day to day slash ongoing, kind of separate, because day to day ongoing, we're cleaning the streets, for example, Public Works, that's things that they have to do every morning, every day. And that some of those are goals in here. So maybe figuring out if they're ongoing, because they're going to live forever, like there's one in here that says establish relationships with UC Berkeley. That's an ongoing, is that really a, does that belong in here or not as a another addition of a goal? As an example, there are the ongoing, there's 48 ongoing goals versus 153 current and new goals. So just trying to differentiate the two, if that might help us prioritize.
Yeah, if I might suggest, we can consider that as we go through each strategic goal area. But my understanding was that in choosing these goals, even though they may be ongoing, they are areas that we really want the city to focus on. So, I mean, you know, we can say illegal dumping, we're doing that all the time, so okay, that's fine, we don't need to talk about it. But on the other hand, we could say illegal dumping, that's something we're doing now, but it's something that we absolutely must focus on. We must put it at the top of our list so that our constituents can see that we're taking care of our of our city.
So in that sense, are we also providing additional resources? If it's sort of above the level, so also figuring out in all this, how much more resources? Because yesterday, we were praising Public Works, and a lot of these items are Public Works, so the more we praise, the more they're doing, the more they're doing, the more resources they're going to need. I think that's something to consider as well.
Absolutely. The the purpose of goal setting is to determine how our finances are going to be spread out.
Okay. Perfect. Just want to make sure that we keep that in mind there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then. So lead us through strategic goal area one.
You're going to go through one, which is also in your packet.
Yes, and I'd like to add that that the information in the packet is much more detailed than the information on on the slides. So so it's unfortunate that the public, well, that that everyone else can't see what we see in the packet.
Yes, well, okay, good point. The print, as I said.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, it was published online, sir. Mayor, it was the agenda packet, it has the details that it was published in Escrib.
Yes, okay.
Okay, my turn.
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to ask, I have a question on reduce homelessness, because what you are putting here is the grant received, but I would love to see more detail. So if we can, if the if the staff can explain more about in the goals of the four one, $8 million, and what are the goal of the eight? One moment.
Which goal, which goal are you on?
I am in the first goal in 1.3, that is called reduce homelessness. And they are two things here that is, we receive some money, right? But we don't see the goals and the description. So it will be great to know what is under each of these and what, I am not like, for instance, the 4.8, we received before, it says that it will be completed by June 30th, 2024, but the other will be completed or by 2026. So it will be great to hear a little more about that.
Yeah, I would like to say that we're looking at goals and priorities. The goal is reduce homelessness. How that's done is could be myriad ways. And so I don't think that this meeting is to hammer out how they'll be done, it's on agreeing what the goals are. Later in city council sessions, we will have the opportunity to to hammer them out. So so if that's amenable to to the council.
But but it's also like when we talk about the priorities, like the goal is really general, and we want to have more accountability about what is specific projects or what is specific. So this is what we are talking here, like for instance, in the in the first goal, yeah, increase housing access, especially in field development. What that like, it could be anything. So by having these objectives and priorities, we were to say, we are asking to have these priorities met so that it has more accountability for the council, for the staff, and for the public. So in that sense, is what I want to get more information about reduce homelessness, because it's not enough for us to say yes to a grant money when these are no objectives, really. It's it's more about we receive this money, but what we are going to do with that is the priorities.
Mayor, the grants have specific objectives in them, and so if it would be helpful to the council, if this, when we conclude the meeting and when we're clear on if the goals and associated priorities, we have that list, then we can attach more backup for, and some of it has already come to the council and some is in progress. In fact, I talked to Way to Love today. So we we understand, and the point's well taken.
Yeah, and I I'm in agreement with Councilmember Jimenez, but I also believe that in order to get through this document, we need to focus on agreement as to the goals and the priorities. That's what's in the document. How they are manifested is something for the council and staff to discuss and and figure out how we want that implemented. So Councilmember Robinson.
Robinson, I think was trying to say something.
Great, yeah. So I think I hear what people are saying, and I think that what we maybe need is just the wording to be adjusted. So instead of naming the amount of the grant, have some kind of shorthand for the deliverables so that people are clear on what each of those things are. Similarly, my little stress about Niestram Village, if I would have known that that was obviously included in FARS, which now seems obvious, but if it was if it was like a little sub list of what what FARS would accomplish, that'd be great. I also feel like in when we kind of match back to this larger sheet, naming in the outcomes in this column, the performance matrix, that, you know, MetroWalk is going to bring on X number of units. You know, Home Key will bring on X number of these particular type of units. I think that that really like makes it really concrete, what we're going to accomplish as a city at the end of the term. And I think that'll be really, it'll translate to residents really well as well.
I agree, and I think that that once we get through this and decide exactly what direction we want the city to move, then staff will provide a final report that has all the information that we're asking for.
So what I'm saying is, I think this is great, and I don't have any objections, and I think we need to put some details and make other, make it sure we're all feeling comfortable about it, but I have no objections. Anybody else?
Yes, I.
I'd just like to make one comment.
Sure.
You're probably, I'm not proposing that you have a meeting on every iteration. In fact, I would recommend that you not do that. But there are going to be various iterations of this, and you will get them from time to time as they're updated, particularly in the quarterly reports, because one of the things that is, as you can see, some of those last columns are not complete. We'll be filling those up as we go along. So you're going to see the spreadsheet many times, but not to debate it again.
I'm, it's like, I'm getting a little frustrated because I'm still not clear on what our process is. Are we going down on number one? We started with number goal, overarching goal number one, which is improve quantity and quality of housing, et cetera. And only a couple people spoke. Are we going down the line with everybody on each one of these? Or is that not the process?
We can do it that way. We're and we're doing the strategic goals areas on page five of eight through eight of eight.
So do we, when it's our turn, do we give any comments for any of the goals? Or do we go one by one?
We're, I was thinking just doing the strategic goal area and then and then having people speak to.
So we are on, we're on one right now.
I would strongly recommend that you do them in the order and only comment on what is before you at that time. Or we're never going to get through this. Councilmember Robinson recommended an hour and a half ago, and I thought I heard consensus.
We could actually just go ahead and.
Yeah.
We're on goal one, your comments.
Yes, okay, right, let's let's do that.
What do you think of goal one?
In five through eight.
Okay, thumbs up, good job.
Okay. Thumbs up, okay.
I think she already made her comments.
I am fine. I am fine. I would love to add McDonald and 12, but it's not like hard thing, but I know that there is some work in progress, so and people are waiting to hear from what happened there in a long time, but fine with this, thank you.
I'm fine with strategic goal area one.
I'm fine with number one as well.
There is an item on these sheets, may I ask it to be added to the goals, and that's create paths to homeownership. I think the city can play a role, even though the explanation from the staff program update is not clear, but there are programs, for example, they help teachers, emergency responders went down payment. The city is doing a good job in terms of promoting affordable housing, but pushing people to stay renters for the rest of their life, I think, is depriving them from homeownership and generational wealth building. So I believe the city needs to start creating paths to homeownership.
Thank you. Melvin?
I'm okay.
Okay, so it seems that the.
But I don't see it on the on the butcher paper. I don't think staff and the council is on the same page yet, Mr. Mayor, because I think we need to see. So Sohaila suggested one more thing under goal number one. Could staff track that for us so we could see it? I mean, either online or on the butcher paper?
And then and then we would have to include Councilmember Jimenez's 12th and McDonald?
So do you want those on the bike rat list or a different list? And that's one point to the one that Councilmember, the both of those two, 12th and McDonald and the item Councilmember Sohaila mentioned are both on the longer Excel spreadsheet.
Right.
But they should be under, she should write goal number one, so that we know which ones from where. That's all I'm trying to do for sense of organizing.
Okay, that's good.
Right.
And, yeah, and what you said, yeah.
Yeah, no, but I also want to make sure that we have here a majority who is saying we are okay with goal one.
Right.
So it's not like.
Yeah, we we are not voting on those, we are just making note that they were mentioned. What we're voting on is what is on this document.
Okay, perfect.
And and the majority voted in favor of strategic goal area one as written.
One through four.
Yes, Melvin voted yes.
Yeah, no, I'm good, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, all right.
Me, I said like, that's what my overarching statement earlier was.
We want you to stand up and dance on the table.
I mean, we could do that, but that might be a liability issue.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, for process clarification, so we're writing these on the side here. At what time do we come back and vote to add these?
We don't come back to vote, they are items that will be considered as we move forward, but but there is no timeline for those. I mean, you know, we might get a grant and then and then we'll jump on it. Or it might, it might just sit there with with no finances to to implement it and and, you know, we'll wait for the moment.
Bike burner or freezer?
Okay, so so let's let's move on to strategic area number.
Number two.
Yes.
We're on two, okay. Comments? Clarification, but no additions.
Sapeda, do you have any comments?
None at this time, no. Actually, I do, 2.5, research new progressive taxes, and then it has measure U implementation. It doesn't, the measure U is already researched and voted on. That's not a new.
No, no, sir. So measure U is extremely complicated, and we need to continue to monitor measure U. We need to continue to have hearings for it. We need to continue to provide technical assistance. It's a very significant undertaking, and I would be remiss if I if I didn't let the council know that in finance, along with the state audit, right, that this is a huge undertaking, and we we have to get a new technology system to help implement it. And we are continuing to issue RFPs to provide technical support to implement it.
And and being on the the. And, and being on the, the ad hoc committee, you should know that, that there's conversations around measure U.
And that I know, but the, the item says research new progressive taxes, so that's why I'm trying to figure out, because.
Oh, okay, so.
Measure U is not a new, it's an ongoing, and I realize it needs ongoing.
I think, I think what they've put down here are things that are, are ready and processed.
Okay, so the labeling is what got me there, because the intent, when we were writing this goal, I believe, and I believe this item was, Councilmember Jimenez's item, was to look for new, but this is ongoing. So as long as we're okay with the wording being off.
If you have any suggestions, you know, we'll, we'll put them down.
The titles came from your spreadsheet. So what you see in the left-hand column, that's from the big spreadsheet. That was one of the things you called out as one of your goals. So just repeat it, and then they show you one of the examples of the things that they're attempting to do to meet that.
So maybe the suggestion is just to change that, that header to implement progressive taxes, if that's what is going to be the goal for the term.
Yeah, because the 2.5 on the spreadsheet doesn't match that. And I'm okay with, because I want to provide the support, so I'm okay with saying, not a new, but maybe continue the support of the progressive tax, and then we have the measure U. Then that makes sense.
Right, but, but I think we also want to research new progressive taxes, so it's not something that we want to.
So again, I feel like these, this was identified because it's still got a big lift to do in order to get measure U completely implemented and all the things worked out, the issues that are still ongoing worked out. And it's only for this term, right, like this one to two years? And so as measure U gets worked out, then we could start a process with something else, right?
So you're suggesting that we not look into new progressive taxes?
I'm not saying that we don't look into it, I'm saying that it's not.
A priority.
The use of the word priority is difficult. I think of it as a goal that we're going to focus on and make sure we get done, and that doesn't mean that we're not going to also do other things.
Right, yeah, but I, I use the word priority because that's the word that.
Yeah, I understand. And it is a priority because we're going to make sure we get it done. But that doesn't mean that, you know, the UUT, the utility tax thing, isn't going to get worked done on it, and other things aren't going to get worked on.
Yeah.
So, so my only concern with, with goal section two is that I feel like two, three, 2.3, number four, improve economic development process to support local businesses is very vague. I would even be happier if we said make a plan to improve economic development process first, because there's some kind of outcome. It seems very vague, and I, you know, I really do hear all of the small businesses and other ones who've been coming to open forum and really asking for support, like post-COVID support, ARPA support, and I feel like we could do a little bit better by them by clarifying exactly what we're going to make sure to have finished, because that, that just seems very vague.
Can, can we let Lizette speak to that? Or no, Mayor?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Lizette. Can you speak to that, please? About the HRNA work and what you've been doing?
Is this on? Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yes, so the revitalization of the attraction, one item that we're doing in particular is using a customer relations management software. So that's currently happening, and what we're doing is we're using the business license information as the data to create this customer relations software, and it really evolves with three modules. So the first one is internally and trying to strengthen our data for businesses. The second one is we're going to provide an open platform, kind, if you would imagine like a Yelp, where businesses have the opportunity to add their business hours, pictures, have really control of this platform and have, and have the algorithms really come up. So if you're Googling, Googling this small business in particular in Richmond, they'll be able to really get elevated on those searches. And the difference between open Blue Dot and Yelp would be that Yelp sometimes does provide packages that small businesses have to pay for, like elevate your creative content, things like that. But the open Blue Dot, it's exactly what it is, it would be open. And then the third module will provide a rewards program, and that would be bringing, that would be keeping dollars local. So it would provide a rewards program where you would earn $5, and you're able to spend the $5 within another business in Richmond.
So just to be clear, what's that, what's that program called again, or the application?
It's called Blue Dot.
Blue Dot. So I would love to just see if number four is really referring to Blue Dot. I would, I would love to see it called, you know, Implement Blue Dot, and then we can talk about all the outcomes of, of that being implemented later. And then I would say if that is true, one, that sounds great. I under, I dealt with the Yelp with a bunch of different things, and it has, definitely has barriers. But I also feel like we've been hearing pretty concertedly, both in the council chambers and outside, from small businesses, that they're also looking for programs to offer financial support to help strengthen their businesses and helping build capacity. And I don't really see that here. I see a little bit in terms of technical assistance and whatnot, marketing support, but I think that, that people are also just talking about access to capital and access to other things. And so I feel like, I feel like that needs to be addressed in this category, and, you know, I, I would like to see it in the category. So I just want to make a note.
Okay, yeah, and a lot of those really deal with the regional efforts that we participate in. For example, East Bay EDA, we participate in the workforce development groups regionally. And the reason why that's important is because there's been a regional effort to provide micro grants or mini grants, or whenever that's an opportunity. Again, we could build business clusters within Blue Dot and provide that information and that access to folks.
Okay, I, I, I'm not going to lobby to change it, but for me, the words make a plan insinuate that there is no plan, and so I, I find it difficult to use the words make a plan when, when we're already doing something. Anyway, that's just my comment. Did you have any other suggestions, Councilmember Robinson? No? Okay, then Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Robinson. I wanted to say that I think like also in terms of like being more concrete, the first, the 2.1, number one, continue to support youth works to create pathways to high paying careers. If it can be a little more detail about that, for like, just, I, I just got an email and thank you Director Walker for sending information, but we have 800 youth applicant for a program that we have 500 to 600 applicants. So I think like maybe is also just, maybe it's about like putting more detail about like maybe expanding the youth job program to provide more opportunity for, for youth in the city, so we can expand up to a hundred or a thousand, you know, like, but that be more concrete. And then the other part that I will put in the bike rack is the port, like, I think like that is something that we need to, or, yeah, in the goal, yeah, in that one, thank you.
And if I could say something real quick, with the youth work, I've been working with Tamara Walker for providing different programming with businesses that already exist here. So for example, introducing her to the tenants we already have at the port and building those relationships, because we know that a lot of, a lot of the marine industry has, needs certifications, and so those are a different path, right, than going to college. And so we're building a very great effort with Tamara Walker's team to get those, a path created for those marine jobs.
Yeah, so that will be great if we can be more specific, because I know, for instance, there is a great program for the lifeguards as well, that people are getting paid to get their swimming hours and then getting paid to take the, the test so they can be lifeguard. So I think it's a lot of good work that is happening. It just, I feel like, as Councilmember Robinson was saying, it just needs a little bit more specificity in, in this, so we know what we are talking about. And then the, the other part in, in the research new progressive tax, I will add, like, if we can really start some research around the progressive UUT, which is something that it will be important to, to look at it. So thank you.
Okay, I'm.
Pushing on.
Can you explain the purpose of the bike rack? Once again, I'm, I'm a little.
I'm sorry.
How, how is a bike rack being used?
You're asking me?
Yes, I'm, I'm asking you, because.
What is being used?
How is a bike rack being used? Are we using it as a spot to consider items that we want to be placed on here?
I think that's what I heard from the, someone. Someone said put things in there that are not on here yet.
What you mentioned was that we are going through these goal settings and suggesting some changes, and then these other goals could be there for just future things, like for instance, if we get a grant and it's, it's part of this, then it can be moved. This is what I heard from you.
That's, that's not what I said.
Okay, so can you, can you?
And, and when you put the port on there, I was, I was a little confused, thinking that maybe we don't have the same understanding.
Well, just a point of clarification maybe, because I thought what we decided was that we're going to go through goals one through six, you were going to review them for clarification, if you needed additional explanation, but not for addition. And in fact, you said clearly to Councilmember Robana, who wanted to put her emergency stuff on there, that this was not the time to do it. So just to bring you back to what you agreed to.
I said, I said things that were not in this document.
Well, actually, I need to go back and look, because I think her IGF part of it was in that document. In any event, I, I thought what you were going to do was go through this to see if there are any omissions, anything that, you know, we missed, okay? And then for clarification, if you're processing.
Okay, so then the omissions go to the bike, bike rack to be considered?
The additions, yeah, I didn't think you were adding at this point.
So here, here's what I, what I see, the reason why the whole bike rack is, is there is because there's more to creating the list than just things that we'd like to see happen. There needs to be a consideration from staff on capacity, what is possible, what can be achieved within the time period. There's a bunch of other considerations. So I don't know that we have enough insights on each of these additional projects that are already on the list that staff has made to just put it on the list, right? But we could at least put it in, on a separate list, and then at some later date have staff consider those things, and then, you know, talk about impact on the list.
Well, the, the port, the port revitalization was one of the primary items on here. It's not on this list, and the city manager said that she didn't put it on this list because she wasn't in charge of it. But there are many things that are happening in terms of port revitalization. We have had developers come evaluate, we've had, we're hiring a port director, we have had the, the state energy commission come look at it, you know? So, so there are a lot of things that are happening now, which mean, and then it's, it's odd that, that only one thing from the port made it to this, and it was under 2.1, and that was support implementation to Marantine Academy connected to Kennedy High School. The other end of that is the port.
Yeah, I agree, and I feel like that's why on this list, we're saying that the port revitalization is missing, in our opinion, and that we are kind of, you know, after we get through all of the things, ask staff to reconsider adding that, right? But, but they would need to reconsider it in relationship to all the other things, because there's only so much that they can do.
So, so in that case, we would not approve strategic goal area two because something is missing.
Mayor, if I may suggest, on the, on the port, I think I would be able to, I, I, I don't know, yet know how I would measure what, what is happening at the port, because the Bloomberg track, it hasn't been indicated.
The Bloomberg track has nothing to do with it. The Bloomberg, the Bloomberg track is an addition to it. This would be happening if we had the Bloomberg track or not.
Okay, so Mayor, what I understood was happening is that as part of our work with Bloomberg Harvard, there's a collaboration track and an innovation track. And so I'm not yet sure how to articulate the priorities, because I don't know what track that we're getting. I'm just saying, I'm saying, I'm using I statement, sir, okay? So I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not important. I'm just saying I don't yet know how to articulate it. I'm not saying it's not important, I'm saying I don't know how to articulate it. And I would be, if the council as a whole wants to add items, I would be happy to do that. I just don't know how yet to articulate it in a way, in the same way that you probably can.
Okay, so let me articulate it. This was something that came up before we chose a track with the Bloomberg Leadership Initiative. This was something that was coming together very, very strongly from all areas. So because things were coming together so strongly, and because it was innovative, and because it required collaboration with a lot of different jurisdictions, I thought that the port would be a perfect vehicle to explore city leadership. This initiative isn't about projects. The Bloomberg Harvard Leadership Initiative is about leadership. So, so we shouldn't be tying projects to a, a initiative that's about leadership.
Should be or should not be?
We should not be tying product, projects, goals and objectives to a project that is about leadership.
Suggest a resolution here? I, I agree, I think the port is a great project, it has a huge potential for the city, there's a lot of work to be done, it's a huge scope, and, and, and we don't currently have a clear action plan for it, but there's many different things that are already moving for a while. So I would suggest that we, you know, ask staff to look at including that in, too. Period. Revitalization of a port is a large category, and then we could look further at what exactly we could try to set as our achievable goal for the, for the time period, which could be some subset of the things that are moving forward.
Well, 2.25, support implementation to Marantine Academy connected to Kennedy High School would be part of the port, so we would take it off of this and move it over to the port item.
Sure. I mean, it's one of those top items that like exist in both places.
So can I?
Is that clear to everybody? I didn't follow it, but.
So can I suggest that, so we will be taking a number five and 2.1 and bring number five, like bring revitalization of the port as number five and 2.4? Is that, and, and we know that revitalization of the port could include on the Maritain Academy.
If the rest, I couldn't follow that. Did the staff understand what was being suggested? I didn't follow it. Just before you go on, I, I want to just go back and make one clarifying comment again. I keep trying to say this, this is your process, and what I thought we agreed to, as you go through it, if there is something that you think that we missed that really ought to be, you need to raise it. I don't think anybody needs to be defensive about that. Didn't, didn't we say that?
Yeah, right.
Right, so, yeah, we don't need to, nobody needs to be defensive about raising your issues if we left them on.
So I feel like that's what was done, and it's on the thing, and we, yay!
Yes, all right, all right, we're on the right path, okay.
So, so the ones that are questionable, we don't vote on, we come back to them after, after we've had that discussion.
I think that you raised some good points earlier, because some of the things that were being brought forward were actually not even included in this list.
On this list.
And I think that that is problematic, because we had so. And I think that that is problematic because we had so much discussion in order to arrive at this list that we don't want to bring in things that we haven't even discussed yet. But the port is clearly on this list and it was a voted priority.
It is on this list.
So that doesn't fall into the same category.
So just so we're clear, you add stuff as you think appropriate and the group will decide.
And just to get clarification, just because they're not in these white sheets here, doesn't mean that we're excluding them, right? Whatever's in here is still getting worked on.
At some point, yes.
Well, because there's like, there's an item in here and I forget which one, I was looking at one of them, but it's like 25% and it's like, it looks like it's in progress. So I just want to make sure that as soon as we vote for this, that everything else just goes up.
Right, well, this document is about priorities.
Yeah, it's raising it to the.
So these are all items that are on the plate and we will get to them. But, you know, you need to eat your peas before you can have your dessert.
Yeah, and that is, I want to make sure that we're not eating peas for dessert too because that we're not stopping the process, right? Because some of these are moving as well and I want to make sure that we're not stuffing our mouth with peas and flan.
Yeah, well, you're not the kind that uses honey to hold the peas on a knife, are you?
Yes.
Then you have your dessert and peas.
All right, as long as those are not being pushed aside.
Mr. Mayor, can we keep moving down the road?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on, no, we're still on strategic two. I didn't have a chance.
Oh, that's right.
I'm waiting patiently. Here I am.
All right, I'm gonna try to move you.
Okay, all I want to say is, number one, just to add to the port, since Claudia made a good point, it could be number five under 2.4. So if you could add to the port, put 2.4, 2.4 is where it belongs.
2.4, but number five now.
Under number five, under 2.4.
I know, I know.
And the only comment that I have is let's add the public bank. We already talked about that. It's just added as something that, you know, I don't care what it added, but it's under goal two.
And it's in motion.
And it is in motion.
All right, okay. Now, are we, now, did everybody speak?
No comments.
No comments? No comments?
Now we're on three.
Okay.
No, somebody has something else to say on two? No, we're on three now.
Yeah, we're on three.
You're on three.
All right. And it's a little past six. Okay, we're on three. Omissions? No additions? Omissions?
None that I can see now.
Okay, we can come back.
Doria?
For me, I'd just like to name MLK Center and maybe for clarity, if it was just reconvening nerve, you know, updating the schematic design.
Is that 3.2?
It's not in here.
But that's where you.
It would be 3.2, yes. So that we get it ready for eventual funding and implementation, but do some of the background work. And it could be one of those things that it's not primarily staff, like maybe it's something that, you know, that I'm doing as a councilperson and with nerve and other folks to try to push it and maybe there's a little staff support. I don't know. But I feel like it's important or else, it's like one of those long-term things. If you never get started, you'll never get there, so.
Councilmember Jimenez.
I agree with that and actually we have in the capital improvement plan, $280,000 that is sitting there for MLK. And it could be that after community members have a plan, we can use that for at least studying, working on a plan for what that new community center and sports center looks like. So I just wanted to kind of like add that. Yeah, and there is a plan and it's all maybe needs to be outdated and maybe use some of these funds to kind of like do something. So there is some, like what I am going to say is that for that, we have some funding that is already in the capital plan, including the capital improvement plan budget as an item that says Martin Luther King Community Center, $280,000. So thank you.
So are you suggesting that it should be placed on the list?
I agree with what Councilmember Robinson is saying. I am just adding that in terms of like some other funding that can be used to do that.
Yes, understood. Okay. I'll be quick, yes.
You're gonna be last. You need to hear what everyone else says.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't say anything.
The only comment I have is with the, it says soccer fields and we know how much we have a popularity in our community for soccer fields, but can we add soccer and athletic fields because there are other types of athletic fields we could use as well?
Highlight.
Yeah.
Highlight.
Under 3.2.
She's, just clarify.
Four is match.
Amending four, so it says soccer and other athletic fields.
Right, right.
Okay. Anything else? Vice Mayor?
That's it for me.
Yeah, perhaps you want to say a sports complex. A sports complex, Richmond is a big city and we are missing that. So that's one comment. And also I had asked for collaboration between city and county, but I don't see it here, unfortunately.
Regarding the soccer fields and?
No, regarding all quality of life issues in District Four, if the city and county don't work together, nothing will be achieved. That's the other part of city that's usually invisible to this part of the city.
I want to make sure that those who understand captured your comment. I heard complex and that's a structure.
Well, my comment number one is a sports complex. Comment number two is collaboration between city and county that I've been asking for, but it's okay. It could be on the back burner, but hopefully not in the freezer.
Not in the freezer, all right.
So we have an item coming to City Council on the soccer fields and so forth and so we'll be able to provide additional information on the third.
Thank you.
Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, I said my comments earlier about the, what Councilmember Robinson already brought up about the MLK community center not being on there, so I'm just plus wanting that essentially.
All right. Councilmembers, we're back to you.
Are we able to add 3.13?
3.13, well now how?
Address issues with the train. You brought, you renumbered.
How do you get to 3.13?
3.13 is right out to 3.12.
What are you talking about? Oh, you're on this sheet.
I'm on the big sheet.
Yeah. I think.
I'm in the big sheet.
Yeah, I think we agreed that we wouldn't revert to this unless there was some burning issue that was humongous that we could, that you know we could all agree on.
And it is because we, well, maybe we put in the bike rack because there's the potential funding that we approved the city council a while ago that the staff is looking for or is looking to work with the congressman. So I just want to make sure that we don't let it go because that is timeliness is October.
Oh, yes, we're working with the congressman on many items.
Yes, and this is one of them.
Yes, okay.
So I don't know if that.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned before and maybe instead of calling it the bike rack, maybe we call it the charging station or something. But for the MLK Center, we have applied for a grant for that and so when we find out if we've received it or not, that will also play into it and we can add it to the, along with the police station, we can add those things to the, to our CIP list since we, there's another way that these things have to, that these projects that don't have 100% grant funding are tracked for the report that you all were considering last night and then for finance. And so we'll make sure that those other subsequent documents are also updated.
Okay, I appreciate your metaphor.
Yeah, so part of the charging station, if we find that power, that charging, then maybe we'll continue with 3.13 and if not then.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep, so perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on three? Mr. Mayor, I stand corrected. Earlier you and I had a conversation and I said to you that all of the items on the sheets we're looking at now came from this big sheet.
Right.
And 3 point X did not.
Correct.
There is one other that I flagged. So let me call that out to your attention. This was not on your big sheet. Staff added that, as I recall. So you need to decide if that's something you want to be a priority over the next two years that we work on, yea or nay.
Councilmember Jimenez.
I think it's something that we need to work because we receive $35 million. So it's not whether we like it or not. We have the money, we need to implement it and I think that this is a great project. It's going to bring a lot of good things to the community, especially communities in under the safe area. So thank you staff for bringing it up. Like we didn't catch that that much, but I think it's really important to have it here.
Thank you. And it is the $35 million that put on.
And these are monies that came after our last meeting.
After your discussion.
Yes.
But I just wanted to stand corrected for something I said earlier. Because I said there were no items on.
All right, so we move on to strategic goal area four.
Are we done with three now? Okay, then we're on four.
Awesome.
For four, I'm not sure, under maybe, I don't know if it lands in 4.1, but parking enforcement is kind of part of improving.
Didn't I see that somewhere else?
It's in the goal, it's in the big sheets, but I don't see it. In 4.3 it says enforcement, but it's just illegal dumping, but I think also parking enforcement.
That's where I thought I had seen it, yeah. Okay. All right. And that is on the big sheet.
That's on the big sheet.
Okay, all right, we're adding that. And it's not an addition. It really is.
It's in the big sheet, it's just figuring out where.
Right, it's more of an omission than an addition.
Councilmember Zepeda, I think that's 4.7.
Are we agreed on that?
4.7, thank you. So it's 4.7.
4.7B.
4.7B.
Yes, I see it.
All right. Councilmember Robinson, we can come back to you to give you a minute. So Councilmember Jimenez on four.
I think it's more about the rewarding of the community crisis response and I would like that.
Where are we now? Which item?
4, 2, 1.
Goal area four.
Oh, community crisis response program. Right, okay, I got you, okay.
One, and instead of just putting community crisis response program, I would like that we rewarded it to say implement CCRP by August 2024, which was the direction that city council gave to staff.
Okay, now does staff get that? Because I don't understand the letters.
We have it, thank you.
But everybody else understands what Councilmember Jimenez suggests?
I can repeat it. Instead of just saying community crisis response program, that we reward that and said implement community crisis response program by August 2024, which was the direction made, given by city council to staff.
Okay, all right, it's just more descriptive. It's not changing, it's just more descriptive. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I don't have anything for four, but I actually just thought of one more thing that I think might go under three, but maybe somebody can help me to where it might go under. It's to develop the farmer's market for Marina Bay. It's something that Lashonda and myself and Dorian have been working on.
Is this part of the goal that we voted on?
It's part of, yeah, we did have that in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's just that I don't know if we want to put it under.
Staff, can staff help?
Goal area three, improve the quality of life and community health.
Didn't you have something under economic development?
It's more of just to bring the food, healthy food to people.
Oh, okay, all right, can staff help decide where?
Okay, how about 3.2, under create new infrastructure?
3.2, create new infrastructure?
Add one more point, like number five would be develop farmer's market at Marina Bay. I'm sorry, it's number six, you're right. Number six, under goal area 3.2. And that's all that I have under, so I have nothing for four.
Okay. Councilmember.
Vice Mayor, can we put something like seek to develop because on that one, we don't have control over the, if a farmer's market will agree to come? Like we can try, right?
We already have talked with the president of the certified for Richmond.
But I'm just saying, just like hypothetically, right? Like we as staff can invite them, we can try to set it up, we can do all the logistics, but we don't have the, we, they can still tell us no, is all I'm saying. So I was just asking if we can say, you know, seek to develop.
Work to develop.
Yeah, seek to develop or work to develop or something like that, so because, thank you.
Okay. All right.
My turn?
Yes, it is indeed.
So under number four, I would like to bring the item we discussed earlier. It's in the table and that's public emergency preparedness. Thank you.
And where would we put that, under?
I think it'd be a new thing.
Mayor and Councilmember Vana, would that be under 6X?
Oh.
No, that's not climate.
Well, we put reduce local hazards.
Conduct a local hazard mitigation plan. Wildfire risk reduction? Yeah, it's under 6X. That's new. I thought I saw that. See, see number two, under 6X on page eight of eight.
Okay, maybe we can add the number three over there to say, maybe we can add the number three under 6.
Oh, under 6X and number three would be what?
Yeah, public emergency preparedness.
Number, goal four, 4.4 is improve emergency response and preparedness.
Is somewhere else?
It's.
Yeah, it's in two places, so we just need to know from council where they would like it to be.
Can you, can we help Councilmember Vana and me figure out where it is?
Where is it?
They're saying it's under.
4.4?
I actually think it would go more under goal area four rather than under the shoreline.
Yeah, I think it should be under, all of those things under six actually, like reduce local hazards should go under public safety in my view, but up to you. I don't care how you categorize it.
But it's captured and they know where it is.
Yes, 4.4 is where it should go because that is improve emergency response and preparation.
I'm sorry.
4.4, improve emergency response and preparation. So that's where it should go.
So it'll be 4.4, we're saying, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, is that agreed?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember, anything else, Councilmember Vana?
Thank you, I'm going to see if that's all.
All right, the item was there after all. Councilmember Willis.
Is it spreadsheet or you're asking to add it here?
Moving, moving 6X to.
No, we're actually asking to put an item which is 4.4 under four, to make it 4.4.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, just moving to 4.4.
Under the strategic goal, under the staff report.
So it'd be under public safety. Okay, all right.
But I think you're also asking to explicitly add the emergency response things that are not yet actually listed.
Correct.
They're in, they're in that document, but they're not in the priorities list, so you're asking to add them to the priorities. I know, but my point is that you want them to be in the priorities. In the short priorities, yes.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that that's clear and that it's not just that we're moving 6X. We're actually adding one from.
This 4.4 becomes that 4.4.
Yeah, she got it here.
All right, okay, we got it. Councilmember Willis.
No further comments.
All right, are we done with four? Any final comments going on? Well, Councilmember Robinson, we come back to you, I'm sorry, and the mayor. We skipped all over the mayor.
So I just had a question and my question had to do with 4.3. Just again, one of those things where you're afraid that, because the only thing that's listed is enforcement and kind of a police response to dumping, that we're not going to drop the other things. I just want to have clarity on that, that we're still going to do our senior support and our dumpster days and everything. So as long as those things are not being dropped for enforcement only, I'm good.
Okay, did staff, did everybody get that?
Yes.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing, Councilmember Robinson say is that we need to have a 4, 3, 1, 4, 3, 2, which focuses on the positive implementation of, no?
No, I was just clarifying that this wasn't meaning that the things that we're already doing, the dumpster days, the support for seniors to get the track, they're big items out, that those weren't going away. But rather, we're also, we're adding a new thing, which is actually doing some enforcement to try to address illegal dumping because, you know, I just wanted to make sure that the good things that we were already doing are not going away. going away, we're just adding a new thing to try to really push on illegal dumping.
Okay, got you.
No, we didn't, we haven't heard from the mayor.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Yeah, but Councilmember Jimenez wants to talk, and I need to hear from the mayor first. Everybody else has had their two cents.
Yes, uh-huh, well, um, you know, I, I'm matching everyone else's two cents.
So I just want to make sure that what, uh, Council Zepeda said about parking enforcement is captured, so I don't know what is captured, it was.
Parking, yeah, parking enforcement, you did.
Parking enforcement, yeah.
Where do we put that?
Four point four seven.
On the, on the short list, though. On the short list, maybe under four point one, or four point, I don't know.
Improve road traffic, bike and pedestrian.
Yeah, because it could, it could be part of the, the improved traffic, and, yeah, thank you.
Number five. Yeah, number five and four.
Oh, is number five in there? Is it in there?
Uh, add parking enforcement, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, is, you still have the floor?
Yes.
All of it.
Um, well, I said that I added, I'm doubling down with all my other council members, and so we're ready to move on to the next item.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, then we are on goal number five. Strengthen the city's internal infrastructure and processes. Comments, omissions. Have a lot under improved fiscal.
I'm good with five.
Responsibility, good with five?
Yep.
We've got one good, should go on to the next.
I, um, I had a couple of things that I felt like were in the other document, that I feel like we should continue, we could, we should add here. One of them was making sure that we have a performance evaluations for all staff, and that those are implemented, even though I know that there's a policy, that there's a practice of implementation.
Now, what are we under now?
I don't, I don't, I can't see this document, I'm so bored.
Item five point five.
Five point five, I would like to have, I would like to include that in, um, in the short goals.
And could you state that again? I'm sorry.
It's, it's making sure that across the board, all city staff have regular performance evaluations.
Okay.
I know we have a policy now, but in practice, it hasn't happened regularly for everyone in all departments, and I feel like that's a really important element for a number of different reasons. Um, and we can talk about all the reasons at some other point in time. And, um, and then the next one that I felt like was really, um, I feel like it's important is, we talked about improvements to the capital improvement budget, and I don't know, I know that that's an ongoing thing, and that you're already working on it, but I also, I would like to see it as a goal, because I feel like it's a really important planning tool, a part of the budgeting process. We saw how it comes up and informs other things that we do, like our, like our fees last night, um, so I just felt like it's important.
So could you, I'm sorry, to ask you to keep restating stuff.
So the, the current format and process around, improve, improve the format and budgeting process to kind of update the CIP.
Escape.
Capital Improvement Projects Budget.
All right, I'm sorry, Councilmember Robinson, I was listening, but I wasn't catching it.
And then the last thing was, I just had a question about the IT.
Yes.
So I don't know all these IT systems, but I know, and my question is, is, does one of this, these systems address the transition from using paper, like, to do inspections and stuff, to going digital?
You'd have to defer to staff and to our ITs.
That's going to be part of the CRW track it replacement.
Track it replacement? Okay, great, then it's there, so I'm good. So with those two things, everything, I'm good.
All right, now, did, ever?
And if I, oh, I was just going to add, we did update the budget document, and once we have the Q four updates, then we'll do another iteration, and I'll send out a link to council with the new budget format.
I also feel like maybe we should have some kind of discussion, or, um, to talk about process, like, how do things get onto that list? When do they get them onto that list? How do we break apart these larger projects so that, you know, you can begin work on a, on a very large project without, without negatively impacting projects that are further down the line, that are in construction? Like, in order to start the police, you know, thing, are there things that we should be doing now in order to make it to the ten-year goal? You know, so I feel like, uh, there's a little, I would like to have, or, or talk about, or address the process.
Like a runway, yeah, like, understanding what the runway is, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Councilmember Jimenez, I think we're, you, Vice Mayor.
Um, yeah, on IT, I, um, I don't know if it fits into any of these already listed systems or not, but what I'm looking for is, on the council dais, um, are we going to get, um, the system, we have a new system, but are we going to have a program to allow for us, like, we used to be able to press a button to request to speak, and we also pressed a button when we voted? And right now, we have to hold our little, our little, our hands up, or our little signs up, and for voting, we have to do roll call, but it could, so my question is, is, is that programmable, the new system, in the way that I just mentioned?
Um, I'll take a look at two, but it looks like we're going to address that in phase two.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Vana.
Thank you, I'm also for item five point five, and I think it's included.
The website upgrade?
The accountability item.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's all, thanks.
And Councilmember Willis.
Um, forgive me if I did a no-no, but I did dive into the spreadsheet, and there's one thing that I actually think is important that is missing from here, and I want to raise it because it's been something that we've been talking about for years, especially with the pandemic, and we were forced to switch to Zoom, and that's getting the capacity to translate our council meetings to Spanish, and have that simultaneous translation. Also, we do have a big enough population in the city, a lot of the folks that I work with do tend to be monolingual Spanish speakers, and they need translation, and we've even seen it when the soccer field was a huge issue, and folks came out, community members were there to translate for each other, but in terms of the other dialogue that was happening, that capacity wasn't there, and it has been something that's been talked about, and I do want that to be a goal that we start to strive to on how we're bringing that capacity to make sure that we're able to simultaneously translate our meetings in the Spanish as well. So that's one, if we put on a bike rack, charging station, or add it and take away, but I don't want that one to get lost.
Councilmember Willis, that will also be in phase two.
Okay, sorry, I was looking for you behind me, because I'm the speaker, so forgive me. That'll be in phase two?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so I did want to raise that up, but otherwise, I'm good.
You're all putting the freezer manufacturers out of business. You aren't putting anything in the freezer. Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, um, I like all the suggestions that were made, and I stand with, uh, Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Vana on emphasizing five point five, which is to improve City Council and staff accountability, prioritization processes, and set reasonable expectations regarding staff time and response to inquiries.
All right, okay, if all comments are in on five, we now need to talk about the shoreline. And its sustainability.
He's going to go down the road or something.
Yes. Zepeda.
Comments? You're good?
I'm good.
Councilmember Robinson.
I would like to add, um, in the shoreline, um, kind of like a second point that says, is, like, strategies to implement, work on strategies to implement the green and new blue deal.
That's good, yeah.
I'm sorry, where is it? Which item?
That was, it was in the big sheet.
It was in the big sheet, and we had already, like, they, it's coming to the City Council pretty soon, and so I just want to make sure that we have that, there, like, work on strategies to implement the blue and, and green new deal, uh, recommendations.
Isn't that under the board, though?
No, no, that's for the whole city. Okay.
One of the things that we didn't include in here, because that would be Samantha with, with Tamara's team, is regarding the solid waste collection and post-collection agreement. So if we do, um, add more things that would involve our environmental manager, then one of the other requests I would have is that we would need to expand that, that division to enable that capacity, since we have this, the solid waste and, uh, collection, post-collection impacts every resident, and it's, you know, we only get a chance to do it, you know, every decade or two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor.
Um, yeah, I, I agree definitely with what the city manager said, so I don't know if you, is that just expand the environmental department or division? Yeah, so you probably have that on there. Um, and the other, the other thing that I just is, I want, it says consider shoreline resiliency toxic inventory plan. I want to, you know, just clarify that what we're looking for is an inventory of the toxins.
Mm-hmm.
It's under, uh, six two, just add the word.
Six two, toxic, toxic.
Toxic.
Before inventory.
Inventory, yeah.
Toxic inventory.
Right.
Councilmember Vana.
I'm good.
And Councilmember Willis.
I'm also good.
And Mr. Mayor.
Let's roll.
All right.
We in.
Now then.
We're done. With that, we're done.
Time to dance, I'm.
With your concurrence, with your concurrence, we are done with our three R meetings on these goals and objectives. Uh, I have recommended to you that you get quarterly reports, some of them may come faster than that, depending upon what the issue is, on the updates. This, uh, spreadsheet is going to need to be updated from time to time. There are blanks at the end regarding cost, regarding staff assignment, and those, and so those are going to be filled in as we go along. Councilmember Robinson.
So I would like clarity on the things that we wrote down as additions, clarity from staff, like, what, what's the process to consider including these things, and how do we understand the impact in terms of staff capacity?
Um, that's a really good question, and, um, I think we need to, to go back and look at the totality of them, and then come back again with another recommendation, like we did, uh, for this, for this list, um, and then also, uh, look at our vacancies and try to prioritize hiring to achieve these things. Um, and so it, it would be, you know, multi-dimensional, multi-steps. Um, I, my thought is that, um, we could, um, come back to the council, um, I'm thinking about, because we have soccer field items on, and we have the other corrective action plan and the budget things, probably, um, in November.
At a council meeting.
Mm-hmm, at a council meeting in November.
At a council meeting.
But it doesn't mean that work is going to stop in the interim. Daniel's still going to, you know, personally design a hundred and thirty-two, um, traffic interventions.
The traffic engineer.
Yeah, well, actually, actually, uh, we have, he doesn't technically have a traffic engineer, but we've never had four PEs ever in Richmond, ever, so we have four now, so, uh, Daniel has to figure out how to thoughtfully deploy them all, and then, uh, we can figure out what the appropriate, appropriate staffing mix is, um, and then also how to work on cost recovery.
I just wanted to make a quick comment about that. I feel like one of the, one of the things that we're doing here in prioritizing things is saying that we can't do all things at once, right? And so, yes, there is a list that's a hundred and thirty-two things long, but we don't have a hundred and thirty-two things of money, we don't have a hundred and thirty-two things of time, we all know that. And so of that list, and this is something that we've been kind of asking from Public Works for a while, of that list, how many of the things can you achieve within this one-to-two-year time, given the funding you have allocated yet, you know, to date? And I feel like that, that to me, on that line item, would bring a lot of needed clarity to say, you know, actually, within this one-to-two-year period, we only have funding as of yet, and staff resources to do five. If that's the reality, that's the reality, and we should all know it. And then that means that, you know, that list comes down to one twenty-seven, but I'm sure we're going to add a bunch more things to that list, and that's fine. You know, carrying capacity is fine, we can all be, we can all be realistic, and we can actually ask the city and residents to be realistic, that we only can do so, as much things as we have resources for. Um, so I just, I feel like we keep kind of throwing that big number out there, and I'd rather get to a place where we make it really clear within the term that we have, and the money that we have, and the staff that we have, how much we can achieve in that term. And then that's just the reality.
Okay, before I call on Councilmember Jimenez, I would like to say that Public Works has done that, uh, when we were looking at monies, uh, Public Works came to us and said, we have gaps in these three areas, and they suggested that we move funds from one thing to another so that we could actually complete them, so, so, you know.
They said of the, there are a hundred and thirty-two projects that keep getting repeated here, how many they could do this year?
No, they, they, uh, they said that we had money that we were allocating for something else, and they said, instead of allocating these monies for new projects, we should allocate the money to complete projects that are already in process.
Yeah, and I think that there are projects that are outside of the traffic calming projects that had funding gaps, and that they were talking about that, so there's, there's that issue, and then there's also all these traffic calming projects that folks want to do. So I feel like it would be great to just, you know, change that line item to the number of things that can reasonably be done this year, given the amount of money we have allocated to date, and then that's it, that's what we're accountable for. And, you know, and then next year, or next term, or whatever the next period is, we'll, they'll be in different equation.
I think, I, I would like that it's not about, like, the money, because we allocated one point two million dollars for eighteen, eighteen projects that we approved, and we know that this is not enough. So I think, like, more than also saying with this kind of money is, is, is bringing the list and saying, this is the money that it will be needed, and we can say, okay, well, we have or no have these resources, we, really soon, we will have to make decisions about the surplus that we have, right, and about ARPA funds. So I think these are, like, if we have this information about how much it will cost, and the reality is that, like, maybe if we have the money, but we can know all of them have it, but if we say out of this a hundred and thirty, we can have, I don't know, where, and this is the money that it will cost, then with that information, we can start making decision about the allocation of these other resources that we are looking, and I am not saying that we are going to do all of that, but I am just saying that pretty soon, we are going to be in, in City Council, making decisions about, um, over twenty-five million dollars. So I just, like, seventeen for an ARPA, and eight, eight for surplus, so I think, uh, we need to, if we have that information, and we, not only for the street calming, but for the fifty capital improvement projects that we have in the lease, and what are the gap funding, that will be great. But I also, I will add also that, and I think, like, uh, this is a lot of work, is the, the cost recovery, because we need to recover the money that we have, like, so we can clear the negative funds balance as well. Thank you.
So, so for, um, for agenda clarification, uh, I believe we are in the next steps and final comments phase.
Yes.
People have been making comments and suggesting next steps, uh, and as Councilmember Jimenez pointed out, uh, this is a machine with a lot of moving parts, and when one wheel turns, it turns other wheels, and there's a ratio between those wheels that, uh, are difficult to, to measure. So, so, um, I, I take everyone's comments, uh, in, in all sincerity, and, 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 in all of that. People have been making comments and suggesting next steps. And as Councilmember Jimenez pointed out, this is a machine with a lot of moving parts and when one wheel turns, it turns other wheels and there's a ratio between those wheels that are difficult to, to measure. So, so I take everyone's comments in all sincerity and, and, and in all that, that all of us understand the complexities of running the city. So in terms of next steps, it seems that staff is going to redo the, 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 right, incorporating the changes that we made and are up there for, and then, and then we will look at them and move forward with it, so.
Vice Mayor.
I just have a comment as this, it's, I didn't bring it up as part of the list, but it is on the big spreadsheet. I didn't put it on the shortlist, but I do want to remind the city manager that we had a direction to staff to work with the super, the school superintendent to do a joint school board meeting. And I think some of the things that we can, and it was supposed to, the idea was to have it in the fall. I already talked to the superintendent and he's willing to do that. I don't know if you'll be able to schedule it for this fall, but, you know, if not, early next year. And it does dovetail with some of these other things like the Maritime Academy, we could get, we could, you know, because that has Kennedy students that hopefully will feed into that. So we want to have some presentations to bring us all up to date on how the city, and also the soccer fields, how can we get a better setup with the school district so that our, our young people can use their fields for a, you know, less amount of fee or a waived fee. So anyway, just a reminder on that. Thank you.
And I would like to add that there are a lot of things that are moving forward. They haven't been identified as priorities, but for various people, we have our own priorities that we're working on ourselves without involving staff. Well, actually, that's not true because staff is going, I'm, I'm part of the.
You're taking the leadership.
Yes, I'm.
You're going to put your names next to some of these.
I am part of the West Contra Costa Community Schools System Change Collaborative. And so we're getting various entities involved in this and it's something that, that, that I'm working on and, and I'm getting other people involved with. And I'm sure that there's other people who have other initiatives, other items that they're interested in. For instance, Councilmember Bonna is working with, with, with the fire people. So, so it's not something that the rest of the council is involved in, but when the time comes, she will present it to us and we will move it forward. And, you know, in the meantime, staff has been giving their goals and their objectives and that is what they will focus on. And, you know, when, when the time comes, we will try to interject new things that won't burn them out, but still move the city forward.
And not ignore the things that are not on the shortlist. I will say this, and to your point, there are lots of things that staff works on that you really don't see every day.
Correct.
And, you know, no matter what happens, you have to make payroll. It has to be a high priority to pay all your vendors, but absolutely you have to pay the small businesses or you put them out of business. Those things just have to go on anyway. You have to sweep the streets, you have to pick up the garbage. The police have to look for the robbers and crooks and chase them down, we have to put out the fires. It takes a lot just to keep the trains running and the staff works very hard to keep them from jumping the tracks. That's what has to happen every single day out of the week. None of these, you have not put a single goal or objective up here that I've heard a word from the staff say, "That's a crazy idea, we shouldn't do that." They are absolutely on board with everything you have put on here. Actually, they're on board with some stuff you haven't put on here that if they would put it before you, you'd say, "Yeah, that too." And they say, "Henry, we can't do anymore." One of the things I do want to mention, and I want to be real clear about this, Councilmember Vice Mayor McLaughlin asked from the first day, "Could we put another item on the agenda?" A more global one, and I said, "Oh, absolutely not. We've got more than we can handle." And her specific request was that you have a one meeting to talk about your rules and procedures and you also talk about how you improve communications across the board. And I put forth these high-level questions. What does the mayor need from you to be successful? And then, what do you need from the mayor to be successful? And then what do you need from the staff to be successful? And lastly, what do they need from you to be successful? And how do we improve communications across the board? And realize this is one ship, you got to sail the same way. And there has to be mutual support and respect for everybody. For the mayor chairing the meeting doing the best he can to test the mayor, you should play back your old meetings. That's a joke. But it's not an easy job. Everybody, rightfully so. So anyway, I'm not looking for any new business. I told the vice mayor, "You can find somebody else to do this." But I don't want to leave that if that's something you want to do. And you can set whatever time and whenever you want to do it and choose whoever you want to facilitate that.
Henry, I thought you were willing to do it, but just not at this meeting.
Oh, that's, oh, no, I just said, "Oh, no." We could never have gotten through all of that with this.
No, we couldn't have. You're absolutely right on that, but you're still willing to do it if the council wants it?
It's up to the council and you can decide what you want to do, but I just don't want to leave that. I didn't forget it. And you don't need to decide that here in my presence.
Correct, okay.
There are people out there who do this and they do a much better job than I. Okay, so here's where we are, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We talked about our next steps. We do have public.
Comments.
Comments on the agenda. I'm turning it over to you.
Yes. So, do we have any speakers?
We do not have any public speakers this evening.
I'm sorry?
No, we do not have any public speakers this evening.
No, no public speakers in that case. Public comment session is closed. And do we have any comments from councilmembers?
And maybe I can work with the city manager on, I love the setup, everything is here, just more data. Maybe how do we break down so we can keep track of everything and figuring out if we have to steer the ship one way or the other? I just like data. And while I was here, I was counting different ways, all of our goals, when they're due, when, what's new, what's current. So it's just different ways for us to be able to see it and I'm hoping that maybe I can work with her.
Patrick is researching if, I would like this to not be in an Excel sheet because, you know, sometime, we don't want to be in the Flintstones. So Patrick is researching an online tool so that way it can be more dynamic and have an interface that is more publicly accessible. And so we're, we're hoping that that's something in our second report to the city council we'll be able to share and that would be connected with the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And before I call on Councilmember Jimenez, I want to say that I'm in agreement with Councilmember Sapeda. I too like a lot of data. For instance, if I have a glass, I like to know whether it's half full or half empty. And if it's half full, I want to know why it's half full. Is it because we didn't have enough to fill it all the way up or is it because that's the level that people want it at? And if it's half empty, I want to know, is it half empty because we spilled some or is it because, you know, once again, we were in a car that shook a lot and we didn't want to make a mess as we went down the road? So, you know, data, 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 it's all important. Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for all the work that you did putting together this. I think like that helped us to be more efficient tonight, today with all the goals. And thank you to all city council and the mayor for being more efficient, more effective on, on these. And I think like, I am looking forward to really start kind of like tracking these goals and accomplish these goals and looking forward for the city manager to look at these so she can put the goals on her evaluation sheet. So next year, we can have that. And it's all about accountability, accountability for the staff, for us as well in terms of like how we are moving forward these goals as well. And this also helps the Richmond residents to track what we are doing and what we are accomplishing. So thank you, everybody. Good night.
Anyone, yes, Councilmember Robinson.
Just a quick thing, I, I'm really excited that we're at this moment. I feel like it's a good place to be. It's an achievable list and, and two, two things. One, I'm looking forward to reports that actually do get down to the, the kind of outcomes matrix because I feel like that's going to be something we can communicate to residents and they can really, we can start to reverse this idea that good things aren't happening in the city because we can really present them with concrete numbers of, you know, in this last period of time, we brought this many new houses on, on, we made these improvements to parks. We, you know, it can be really concrete, which is powerful. And then I just wanted to say, you know, I travel a lot from my other job speaking for, at different gatherings and conferences and whatnot and, you know, I just, I don't know if everybody knows this or maybe you know it and it's easy to forget, but sometimes I think we have a lot of, of the disease of not seeing the forest for the trees in Richmond. I feel like we're doing work, this city and city staff are doing so much innovative work, so much more than, than folks across the nation. Like when I get up to talk about the things that our city is doing, usually the folks that I'm on stage with are people who are in community organizations trying to force their cities to do one fraction of these things and having tons of, of fight, you have to fight for like a fraction of the things that we are moving forward concertedly as a city. So I just wanted to take a minute to just recognize just how amazing our city staff, our visionary city staff and city manager and city council is and like how much good work and good projects we're moving forward to try to improve the city. I think that it, it, you can't understate how unusual it is for a municipality to be moving things on all of these different fronts in this way. So I just wanted to applaud everybody and for us to take a minute to see the trees before we dive back into all the work and really know that we are, we're doing things that just are unseen across the nation, you know? And I, I'm not saying that just to blow wind, but it's honestly true. Like we get that feedback constantly from, from people as I'm moving around the country and talking.
Councilmember Bonna.
Well, we're doing better than the federal government, so thank you. I would like to ask the city manager to please, for scheduling, what Mr. Gardner suggested the next meeting with him, could it be towards end of October? My husband's traveling, my time is very limited by myself. I would appreciate that if it could be towards end of October, beginning November. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one quick.
Okay, Council, Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Yeah, I just want to also just make another pitch for, I mean, at the end of October is fine, about how important it is that we get these expectations and any rule changes or at least some clarity on the rules. I think it's going to help us all and I think, you know, in a respectful way, we could all share what our expectations are and I think we'll, we could all be better for it. So I hope that, you know, the council is good with, and I think Henry has been great. So I would love to have this done with Henry and I also want to thank the staff for all the work they've done, including the work today of documenting everything. Really appreciate it all, so thanks.
Well, I will repeat everyone, although I could. I do appreciate the entire staff. I appreciate the city of Richmond for tuning in and holding us accountable by keeping their eyes on what we do. And I want to thank the city council for supporting me as the mayor. I know I often joke about how you love to talk and, you know, the thing is, is that you love to talk because you have a lot to say, you have a lot to share and it's much appreciated. Only we got a lot of the work to do and we're going to do it and we're going to move forward. We're going to continue to improve. I will improve as a mayor and I am always open to suggestions as to how I can become a better person, as to how I can become a better mayor. So don't pull punches back, you know, just make sure you wear big gloves. Thank you. With that, this.
Mayor, wait, 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 can we, can we pick a date now, please?
Okay.
Because it's, it's so hard to get a date. So if you want to offer dates, Mayor, for consideration.
Actually, I was going to check in October because I believe we're going to Washington, DC.
Right, so maybe you want to, Henry, can you make yourself available at, in some dates in November?
I should be available almost any time in November.
Okay, Mayor, do you want to propose dates for consideration?
I'm checking my calendar.
Thank you. And I also just want to say thank you to the, to the mayor and to the city council and to all the staff that have been involved in, Henry, for your patience and guidance and through this, this process. It's been incredibly helpful, so thank you. And also, Mayor, I, I am a new city manager and so I appreciate everyone being patient as we've worked through this process and I'm committed to a path of continuous improvement. And I really want to thank everyone involved and especially Irene because I think the baby can come any day now. So, so I feel bad when she's here at night, late with us, but just want to thank everyone who's been involved in KCIRT because now it's been two, two days back to back. So thank everyone.
Thanks for the chocolates, Irene, never good.
I have two calendars that I need to.
I have two calendars, me too.
Yes, as soon as we can find a date.
Okay, can we have it on the second Tuesday that there is no city council meeting?
In November?
Yeah.
Second Tuesday?
In November.
Oh, October. Wait.
Can we make a deal, Mayor? If we have it in November, can we not have a meeting the week of Thanksgiving?
Yay.
Or whatever way people would like to describe that event.
Shall we meet on Thanksgiving, November?
I would prefer not. I think my daughter might write you another letter.
November 1st?
It's easier to do it.
Yeah. Well, right now, it looks like November 14th.
Yep, looks good.
That's the other Tuesday, right?
Yes, uh-huh.
That we don't have a meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's good, November 14th.
So, November 14th. Is that good with everyone?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Well, when can you make it? We're sitting at stake.
She doesn't have her calendar, so she can't say.
No, it is, I, I don't know yet because I have some issues and I don't know if I am.
Be alive or dead.
Well, not bad, but if I am.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, okay. Well, then, tentatively November 14th, but let's, maybe we should choose several days so that we can.
Okay, we'll work with the clerk's office, Mayor, and we'll work with the clerk's office, but just, that's a good starting point.
Yeah, okay. November 14th is starting point, but over emails, we will.
I was going to say November 1st as well because the 31st of October is Halloween, but we also don't have a city council meeting on the fifth Tuesday and I'm having head shake say no to November 1st, so whatever.
Well, there's Dia de los Muertos.
Wednesday.
Ah, that too, yeah, never mind.
Yeah, November 1st works too.
That's also another holiday. Okay, I retract my suggestion at this point. Thank you, everybody.
So, you guys, I think there are some things that everyone doesn't, we don't know and it's not, we shouldn't share here. So can we take the discussion offline so that?
Yes.
I don't think that scheduling for November is going to work for some specific reasons. And I'd like to take it offline so that we can find a date that works for everybody because this is a meeting that everyone should really be at.
Correct.
And, and I think that November is prohibited for some.
Yeah, we can share over email because we also have a lot of staff here that probably wants to go home. They don't want to be here until midnight again.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll work with you and the clerk.
Okay. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks so much to all of you. Thanks so much to all of you.